Good evening. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Meeting of November 25th, 1960. November 25th, 2024, held in Room 520 of the Multi-Service Center, being broadcast live by Wareham Media. Welcome all. First order of business is calling the meeting to order, so we opened at 6:00 PM, and I will ask for a roll call for attendance, starting on my left.
Baptiste here.
Jane Gleason here.
Julie Moran here.
And the Chair, Carl Schultz, is present. Thank you very much. We have minutes from our last meeting, November 4th, 2024. Patty did another great job. And do we have any discussion, or do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, I have a motion from Sam Corbett, a second by Mike Baptiste. All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
That's okay. Julie Moran, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. The first order of business on the agenda is to discuss 2023 Warren QOZB LLC. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. I'm Robert DeRosa from ASAP Engineering.
Can you spell your name again? I know Patty has it from last time, but just... Yes. And Mr. Warren, can you...
Yes, Danny Warren. It's W-A-R-R-E-N.
Thank you. So, we met two weeks ago, had some discussions. I'm assuming you're back with some updates. I will tell you that I have gotten no additional material from the planning office since our last meeting, so please, let's discuss what you'd like to discuss this evening.
Well, as things are developing, we think it would just be helpful to know if you people regard what we discussed on the 4th, the landscape plan and the changes, as a minor change or a major change to the plan overall.
Okay, so, let's have a discussion. My feedback to you is, I didn't think we were going to take the landscape plan in isolation. I thought we were going to just look at the whole body of changes and approach it that way. But that was my comment, so I'll listen to my members.
I guess that was my understanding as well. What we want to do is help you as much as we can, and so that's why we're sensitive to... We know there's some deadlines that Mr. Warren's concerned about, so our expectation was we would have that information for this meeting.
And just one comment on that? Again, I'm going to restate what I thought at the last meeting, which is because you've bonded the landscape plan, that closing out on that should not be a barrier to anybody. That's bonded, the work is bonded, we can work through that procedurally. Is anyone telling you that particular item is a roadblock?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now, you can proceed.
What we're being told is, and we're kind of confused ourselves too, of what is left out. The garage building is totally done and being used. The landscape is totally done, except for those little trees, and we have them there. We're going to bunker them in for the winter, and Nazarelli's going to do that for us here after tomorrow. We're not going to do anything down with the ice cream building like we talked that night. We have built the box, but we do not like the way it's going to look on the property now, so we're going to put that on ice, and we're looking at... Not now, nothing we're asking for in the next three or four months, but we will be coming back with something we want to do down there, but that's going to be next year.
And that's fine. That's the right process. But, so I'm still uncertain what you're asking for. So if you're done with the work at this point...
We're done.
Then the process, which I thought we outlined, is we need to have a final inspection of the entire project, as far as it's gone, with your engineer, Mr. Madden, Mr. DeRosa, Mr. Cordero, and do a gap analysis. Here's what the plan said, here's what's there, and from that, we would decide how to move forward. So, is that major, is that minor?
Yeah, Bill couldn't be with us next, he had a personal issue, but Bill's confusion is, and I don't know how he got to this point, I told him the other day I knew he was wrong, he thinks you guys want us to go hire another landscape architect, engineer, go back to square one, re-advertise everything.
I have never...
And I know that, I know that. And I said, "Bill, I don't know who's telling you this, but that is not what these guys are asking for at all."
Is Mr. Buckland on the phone?
Yeah, I don't know if it is.
Ken is on, yes.
Yes, I am.
So, have you heard the discussion? We're trying to procedurally move forward. Do you have input?
There is a number of issues with the way it was built and the plans that you approved, a number of differences, I guess, that I was thinking you could decide on whether it was a major or minor, and then schedule a hearing if it was a major change, so that they could, we could proceed to advertise and proceed in that manner, or if you had decided it was minor in scope, that you could do it without a hearing, and we would then just place it on the agenda for a decision.
And I agree that that's what we said, but I don't think we know the scope of all the changes. I don't, maybe others do.
Ken, do you, you said, do you have a list? I mean, do you have knowledge about what the changes are, such that you could make, you could recommend them all being minor, or I guess I'm not following where we actually are on behalf of Mr. Warren?
No, I don't have a list of actual changes in the plan.
So you think we could make the decision without having that list?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Well, here's where the confusion comes back in. There was not one change done there that didn't go through all the hearings, all the approvals, all the inspections, all the, everything.
And I accept that, but the process is, when we come to the end of a permit, you get a final inspection.
Right. And we had that.
We haven't had a final inspection.
At my property?
No. Who did a final inspection? Mr. Cordero has not done a final inspection. At least he says he hasn't.
No, I don't, there's no reason why he can't go do it.
So, that's what we need. We need an as-built plan, which says this is what is there.
They have that. If Bill says you have his, do they have yours? The as-built plan?
I have Phil online.
Okay, one minute. Yes, Mr. Cordero's online, we'll recognize him in a second. So, as far as I know, this board does not have an as-built plan for this project. If it's in... Mr. Buckland, do you have an as-built plan?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, we haven't seen it. Okay. So there's an as-built plan, but the work isn't done, but, okay. Mr. Cordero, perhaps Mr. Cordero could be recognized and provide insight.
The work is done.
Well, I thought Mr. DeRosa just said there was, or you said there was some more planning that had to be done.
No, I said we might come back. We put a lot of infrastructure in the ground.
That's fine, I understood that point. I thought you said there was some planting that you... Okay. I misunderstood, thank you. Mr. Cordero, can we let him in?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I'm here. Just to give you a quick update, we did receive and review the as-built plan from Mr. Warren's group back in August from GIF. We had issued a letter, there were a handful of deficiencies on it that should be corrected per plan, but generally, the site layout was in keeping, except for the area around the large dumpster enclosure on the east side, and then we had the disagreement on the landscaping. So at that time, we were really talking about a schedule of values to be established for any of the incomplete work, to allow Mr. Warren to then change the landscaping and get that approved by this board.
Which we did.
Which you did, right.
Which you did. So the only thing that's outstanding at this point is the final walkthrough for the landscaping.
Okay, so, in your opinion, because I didn't realize that report back in November, excuse me, back in August, represented the final as-built and the final inspection, because I didn't, wasn't clearly communicated to me. But, okay, so, we have, so, in summary, we have an as-built, the final thing, we had some modifications for the landscape plan, which we've discussed and we understand. In combination, what was open from, I don't remember what was open from the August final as-built?
So I'm just looking at my list here on the other screen. Some plan-based information, their drainage system did not have maintenance-based cleanouts. There was some information missing on the drainage systems, both manholes and diffuser row information, as well as system inverts to confirm that it was with the design. There was a set of wood stairs conducted to the coastal walkway that was not indicated on any of the design plans, but they were added in the field. We had some notes regarding the grease trap and sewer manholes, fairly minor. We noted that the area to the west of the pavilion had not yet been finished out with Loman seed, but they were working on stabilizing that out, so that was imminently to be completed shortly after the August site visit. And then they had not installed the wearing course of asphalt, excuse me, we had not observed the wearing course of asphalt. So what we had asked from the ownership team is any information that they had to confirm that the wearing cost went down in accordance with the approved plans. They had paved without oversight. And then, obviously, the landscaping change.
We've got the landscaping under control, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So...
Danny, Mr. Warren, you were going to say something about the stairs when he mentioned that?
The stairs, there were stairs there when we bought it from Greer, the sign was right there, Greer Boatyard, we actually have that. All we did was rebuild the set of stairs back because they were wrinkly and falling down. And the whole wall, the holes are in the concrete wall where all the posts used to be, and we used them again with the new fencing we put up there. So that was, that was something that's been there for a very, very long time.
It wasn't captured on the plan originally.
And we're, okay, we've all accepted that there are differences between the site and the plan. I think all we're trying to get to is to the point where we know what the list of those differences are. Landscape, we got, and so that, as Ken said, we can decide, is it a big deal or not a big deal?
Well, the paving is all done, and has been for months and months now. The grass and stuff on the other side, that's been done for several months now. The one, the main thing that I think Mr. Cordero doesn't understand, the, and maybe this is, and I know this was discussed too, but the way it was designed to put in the drainage, to capture the water coming off the hill and off the road coming down, it was absolutely not going to work. And I was in that business for many, many, many years, and what I put in cost me four times more, but it handled a 500-year flood, so that is, it's there, the drain runs the entire whole front.
Thank you. I'm not challenging the design or the rationale, but we're, I'm not going to question the engineering. That's why we have Bill and Mr. DeRosa and Phil. We just need to get a final list, so that we can determine. So, and I think, I'm going to, I'm talking on it, but others can weigh in. Once we get the final list, I think we can quickly make a decision. Mr. Cordero, what would you need to make a final recommendation to the board? Would you be able to make a recommendation to us by the 9th?
Mr. Chair, we can. Mr. Buckland had actually reached out to us last week and asked us to do the final site visit, so we were actually scheduled to go out there tomorrow, so we couldn't get to it before this meeting, but we'll be out there tomorrow to simply walk the site and just check everything one last time. And just to Mr. Warren's point, just for clarification, we weren't challenging anything relative to the drainage, we had reconciled that. It was just minor inconsistencies on the final GIF as-built plan.
So there's a couple of tune-ups that need to be done on the GIF.
So it's not sounding like a big deal.
Well, it's not a big deal.
Well, I appreciate, certainly, that's, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, for your benefit, we don't believe it to be a big deal, honestly, in terms of what was remaining. You know, the largest issue back in August was the landscaping, was this board agreeing with the landscaping. Obviously, that has been resolved, so that was really it.
Well, and it sounds like the landscaping plan needs to be updated to reflect, you have a drawing that we looked at at the last meeting.
Right, it now reflects the as-built, right?
But that, obviously, last meeting was after the August submission, so we would need that rolled into the package of what's there.
Yes.
All right. Would it be all right with you if GIF just incorporated this new plan by reference into their set? Or do they have to go back and...
I don't think we need to... Ken, we don't have to have them redraw everything if we have a set that they can incorporate. Is that correct?
That's correct. We can go with what they have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we need a reconciliation and a cross-check, and, but they don't got to take your work and redraw it and...
Yeah, the problem is everybody is really crazy busy. He's crazy busy, Bill works like a dog.
Okay. Well, Will...
And you guys work like crazy, and that's the whole problem, everybody's got bogged down on something.
So, let's, I've been talking, other thoughts. I think we can move this forward, but we just need the final bits and pieces.
Can somebody make the list? Ken, can you make the list of everything that we've talked about, that we can basically go there and check it off and say, "Okay, it's done"?
Well, Phil, it sounds like Phil has the list, and he's going to do the final inspection tomorrow.
Okay.
And then we can have a report...
I'll have Phil's list, and then I can...
Yeah, we'll turn it around, Mr. Warren, and get it out to you and to Bill and...
And that will then give us the ability to say, "This is a big deal or not a big deal." It doesn't sound like it's going to be a big deal. And if it's a minor modification, that's just a vote. In fact, Mr. Buckland can pretty much make the recommendation, and we vote to affirm.
Perfect.
And it sounds like, Phil, Ken, do you see any reason we can't get this wrapped up before Christmas on the 9th?
No, I don't see any reason why. If the inspection is going on tomorrow, then that leaves us plenty of time to review the landscape plan, it sounds like, and make a determination from that.
Phil, do you have a copy of the final as-built landscape plan?
We have a copy of the drawing that was given to us back at the end of October.
No, no, there's been an updated version.
So then, no, no, because even the drawing that we got back in October was sort of ambiguous as to what it was, but we don't, we don't have the update.
I'll have it for you tomorrow.
Okay, great.
I don't know if you can see it or not, but...
All right, I think we're, it's taken us a lot of effort, but we're getting, I think we're getting to the end. And from all the research I've done, whatever permitting you need, we're not, we're not in the way of that as far as I know.
Yeah, I don't think so either. That's why I was, just, it threw me for a loop the other day, but, I mean, like I just said, Bill's not here tonight because of personal reasons, and Bill, I consider Bill a real friend, so he will get it done, and...
All right, so let's, I'm, do we see any reason we can't just continue this to the 9th, and we have the final list of changes, recommendation from Phil, and a recommendation from Ken, and we can make a decision?
Would you accept a motion for a minor modification?
You can make the motion, yes. Yes, I will accept the motion.
Make a motion, we call it a minor modification.
Do we have a second?
You're talking on the landscape, that's what we're talking about, right?
Well, no, no, we need the whole...
What Phil's pointed out, right.
The things that Phil pointed out in August, and, which are all resolved.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, which Phil has said is not, okay, an issue.
So I have a motion by Mr. Corbett and a second by Mr. Baptiste. All in favor of accepting this as a minor modification?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye, based on what Phil has just told us. Aye.
And I'm going to, I support the board, I'm going to abstain only till we get to the 9th. I move that we just bring this forward and close it on the 9th, I'm not objecting, I just want to see the list in front of me.
Yeah, I'm good with all that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you'll get Phil the final as-built landscape plan, Phil will do a walkthrough tomorrow. Will one of you be there for the walkthrough with him, or will Mr. Warren, I'm not Mr. Warren, Mr. Madden?
I'll be there tomorrow, and I'll try to get Bill. I just got to get Bill to, Ken, Bill's probably going to call you in the morning, because Bill is determined that it has to be, go find a registered, certified landscape guy, and I said, "No." I said, "Josh was in the last meeting, it came up that we didn't get all the plants the way they were, but we didn't get invasive plants, we got good plants." So Bill's just, it's just, Bill's got to tweak that.
All right, well, if, this is all, I mean, he's got to stamp the plant, so if he's got a problem, we got to deal with that. And I'm assuming Conservation Commission has no objection to this at this point?
No, they don't.
Okay. I think, I think we're homing in on a resolution.
Yeah, I feel good about it.
Yeah, I think I understand now.
I just want to see, the board's feeling comfortable based on the input that we've got, that it's minor, which means we just have to have a vote at the next meeting, and as long as we've got Phil's report, Ken's recommendation, which is required for a minor. The other thing that we can do, and I'll make sure it's on the agenda, is if the landscaping is done, and Phil says it's good, then we can vote to recommend releasing your bond. I know you said that wasn't your focus, but it's money, and I appreciate that.
He either collects interest over there or over there, so...
Okay, I appreciate that. So, my goal then would be, on the 9th, if we've got Phil's recommendation, if we have a recommendation from Ken saying he's recommending that we approve the minor modification, we'll vote on the minor modification and approve it, we'll take a vote on recommending the release of the bond, because what we have to do is recommend to the select board that they release the bond, and then they would take the action to release it, and we can move forward, and then look forward to seeing you in the spring.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you for your time.
I got a Green Cook on the line, so I want to get back over there.
Okay, good.
We've got a bunch of people in that place tonight.
Good, good, good.
All right, thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You also, Danny.
Josh, could I talk to you outside just for a second? Did you got a second off the door for a minute, or...
All right. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of Phase 1 for, not you, Mr., oh, I'm sorry. If you could get the agenda, that's okay. Of the Phase 1, final report on Bay Point Phase 1. Is anyone from Bay Point here? Okay, Mr. Cordero's still on the phone, so I'll ask him to report. I did see your last summary, we got an as-built, as I understand, November 5th, from the applicant. On November 7th, we got an email response from you to the applicant outlining problems with the catch basin. I know the citizens believe there's still some items that are really not subdivision-related, if, so if you could give us a summary of where we're at. I wish the applicant, does the applicant know we're discussing this tonight?
Yes, they were made aware.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, right, we engaged in some email correspondence back at the beginning of November when we did get the updated as-built. That was with Dennis Welch, just to make him aware of what our findings were, even before we actually issued the final letter. The long and the short of it is, if the board recalls, there were a lot of technical, administrative-based deficiencies on the original as-built. Most of those have been resolved, but not all of them, just a handful of stray, missing gas gates and water gates still permeate the plans. But the biggest issues that go, continue to go unresolved is, they made some changes in the field relative to the stormwater flow going to two onsite detention basins. We had questioned that with them during the very first review months and months ago, and we asked for a statement from their engineer confirming adequacy of rerouting the stormwater as they had done in the field. Those still remain unanswered. The administrative deficiencies, while sort of loosely problematic and just a pain in the neck, quite frankly, we could almost let those go at this point, they're just as-built deficiencies. If they have to shut a water gate down, a gas gate down, it's really them operationally to have to figure out where those are. It's problematic, of course, but the bigger issue is not having compliant stormwater based on the changes that were made in the field.
Okay.
So I know that that email went to Mr. Welch, we never saw a response from it, from back on November 6 or 7, somewhere thereabouts.
Just one question that I know we were struggling with, did they provide stamped plans by a certified engineer?
They provide a stamped plan from a land surveyor. So the gentleman that did, or, excuse me, the company that did the survey, those plans were stamped, but we're still awaiting on that statement of adequacy from the engineer of record.
Okay, so without a statement of adequacy, I don't see how we could proceed.
It's never my recommendation to proceed, right? We want for you to have on record a statement of substantial compliance from the record engineer, and you don't have that yet.
Is there any, anyone from the applicant here to speak? At the risk of opening Pandora's Box, is there one or two residents who would like to come forward and ask questions, just very briefly? This is not a public hearing, but I know that you've been following along. If we can keep it very focused, is there anyone who would like, Mr. Sousa, want to come forward? Please, focused, you can ask questions, and we'll try and just provide some information.
I think I agree.
Thank you. And please remember, the, well, this is a site plan, this is a special permit, and it's a subdivision, so there's, that's the purview that we're operating under. And I know throughout our discussions, some of the building issues are really beyond our purview, but please, ask questions, and if one of us can answer it, maybe Mr. Cordero, because we did ask Mr. Cordero to take you a list of concerns, and he did provide us comments on those things.
Okay. The primary concern that we have, excuse me, is we have 28 units there, and five of the 28 do not have the cleanouts for the sewer line. Okay, if you look at the, I have a, I think it's...
I'm sorry, could you state your name and spell it for us?
My first name is Ayres, A-Y-R-E-S, S-O-U-Z-A.
Thank you.
39 Bay Point Drive.
Great, Patty will get that in.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't ask, so...
I have the, I have the plan as of October 30th. I'm told this, this was the most recent plan.
We got one dated November 5th, or we got it November 5th. I don't know what the date on the one we got, but you're in the ballpark.
It's October 30th, Mr. Chair, I apologize for interrupting, that is the latest plan.
Thank you. So you have a copy of the plan.
Okay. The primary concern that we have is, five of the units don't have access to the cleanout. There's none on the diagram, and there's none visible on the property. Okay? We've had problems with sewers since we've moved there, we've had a few problems, and we're concerned about that, because they're there for preventive maintenance to check it, and we can't. So for those five, if we don't resolve that, the only time we're going to know there's a problem, when it backs up into the unit. problem, when it backs up into the unit. And that's a real problem.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's one. Number two, I don't know if this applies to the as-built, but there are, the, the property markers are on the opposite side of one of the parking areas for the condominium. Okay, on the coophone side, we have a, I don't know, about 20 by 20 parking area. And the engineering marker is on, on this side of it. So if you look at it on the plan, we don't have a parking area, okay? That's number two.
Okay.
All right. The fire, the hydrants don't have the snow spikes on them, I don't know if that's part of the as-built plan.
Okay. All right, well, just get your list, and then, then I'll ask Mr. Buckland or Mr. Cudaro. As I said, some of these things are not within our purview.
Okay, the other, the other plan, the other main thing is, when you look at the plan closely, you don't see the wires, the underground wires feeding some of the lights. Okay? Now, I don't know if that's relevant to what we're talking about, but if there's any digging that goes on there, we can't trace where the power comes from. Okay? And we have like five or six light poles. And on the plan, there's something, it's faded, but it's, it looks like it's buried, and it's got, it has a line in it, and it has like rectangles along the line. They end at the pole, but then when they go back, they just kinda die in the middle of the diagram. I wanna know if that's power that's coming to these light poles that wasn't completed, or if somebody can explain that to us, in the event there's a problem.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's the main thing. I mean, but the, the sewer cleanouts is number one.
Okay.
We could probably live with a lot of other things, but that is almost impossible.
All right, so we've got that. Patty, make sure that's on the record now. Mr. Buckland, can you speak to, are these in scope for this board? I mean, they're, they're concerns, obviously. What is the appropriate action? Either can this board act, should this board act, or should the citizens go to another board in town?
These, the utilities were part of the subdivision approval, and the connection to the, to the street is, is not the responsibility of the planning board, but the, that's the, the connection from the house to the, the street is not, is not in the purview of the planning board. But the, the cleanouts, if it's part of the, the structure that, that leads from the, the street, then the location of that should be, should be shown on the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cudaro, have you observed anything in this, in this nature, or in this area?
Well, we've, they had a number of sewer cleanouts that were shown on the original as-built plan. We listed the homes where they were not included. They've revised the plans a couple of times, they've found a couple of the sewer cleanouts, they have added them. Some of the homes are now noted on the October 30th plan as having no sewer cleanout. So the typical process, when you're constructing the sewer in the main street, is you would extend a pipe towards the home that it's servicing, and then the pipe would end. It is typical, that's where the site contractor would extend, would add the sewer cleanout riser to bring it to the finished grade. And then the building plumber, as Mr. Buckland stated, would then connect from the building unit to that stub that would be left from the street. It's clear that no cleanouts were installed. The site contractor and the plumber were not talking to each other. The owner was not managing it effectively to make sure those cleanouts got installed.
Okay, so right now, the advice to the, to the citizens are, those five units probably don't have cleanouts, which is why they're not marked on the plan.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
That would be our assumption as well, yes.
Okay, so, and then from discussion with Mr. Buckland, I don't know, are there any laws, bylaws, that require a site, a cleanout for sewer that the, the citizens have recourse under?
There's, there's nothing in the subdivision rules and regulations that say that there's cleanout necessary.
What about in Board of Health or something like that? Plumbing code? Building code?
Yeah, I think that would be plumbing code, I think that'd be code issue.
Right, plumbing code, it's also conceivable that there is actually a cleanout inside the house. So where the sewer goes through the foundation wall, there may be a cleanout pipe there that could access it for maintenance purposes. So it's, it's not uncommon for cleanouts to not be installed outside of the property, but certainly when they are, they, they're to facilitate maintenance, they're much easier to clean those lines.
Yeah, in my house, the cleanout is inside, as, as you described. So what can we advise the citizens? If anything? Anything?
So, speaking informally, it does not appear-
That's all we're asking, we're just trying to help these guys out.
Yeah, so speaking informally, in terms of regulation, there's no requirement for those cleanouts to be there. The lack of the cleanouts makes it more challenging for maintenance, but I would ask the homeowners or recommend to them to confirm inside their homes at the foundation where the sewer leaves the building, is there an access point that could be opened that would essentially provide the equivalent function as an external cleanout? And if the answer is yes, then in an engineering opinion, I would deem that to be appropriately adequate. Having an exterior cleanout really comes into play if you have a very long run between the sewer main and the street and the building that it's servicing. In this case, you know, we're looking at distances of 30 to 40 feet, which is easily a snakeable distance from inside the foundation to that main line.
The reason I bring it up is because we were initially told that they were going to require, like, pumps in, in the construction of the 28 units, to-
That, that, that would be beyond-
Right, but as part of the design, this is what we were told, but in lieu of that, they agreed to put these cleanouts in the, in the flowpipe going out the door.
All right. I, I, we've noted it, I, I don't think we have any authority to, to act on that matter. And then the, the flags on the hydrants is an issue with the fire department, I think.
I can go there if you want.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't think there's anything we can do on these matters. Am I correct, Mr. Buckland? There's not much we, other than continue to, to care for the citizens and, and hear them, I, I don't think there's any, we're forcing the as-built to be done on Phase One, we're gonna get everything within our authority done, and we're not giving up on that. He's got to provide certified plans. We're not, we're not backing down on that, but some of these minor things, I'm not sure we have authority to act on.
Wasn't that part of the original plan, that all 28 would have them?
That, that was part of, not part of the subdivision or the site, that became part of the building plan, which is not in, in anything that we would oversee. That, that was building permits and plumbing and code. Is that correct, Mike, Mr. Buckland? Once the site plan, special permit, didn't deal with any other than general construction shape of the buildings, right?
That's right, there was no regulation of the design in the, in the rules and regulations of the, where, planning board, subdivision rules and regs.
Right, so we, we don't have, that, that is, once the subdivision is approved, each individual lot and unit has to get approved by the building department. Conservation Commission weighs in on individual lots if they're, if they're in, in a space, but that's beyond where ours, and, and that's, that's building permit, and-
It's plumbing code and-
Plumbing code, electrical, electrical code, Board of Health.
Yeah, Board of Health and plumbing code.
Building inspector.
Building inspector, all this is stuff you've been trying to resolve, Mr. Turner, and I think you can continue to discuss with him, and, and at least get a formal, see if he'll just give you a formal statement, "I'm not gonna do anything about this," or "it's fine." That, that's where, I think where we're at, on these, these small issues. I, I'm small, I'm sorry, I'm not minimizing the impact on your, your life. I didn't mean to.
I think the best route would be Board of Health.
And did you talk to the sewer department?
And the plumbing inspector.
Yeah.
I think those two are the, are the, the two organizations that would have, say, over.
It's a very long run for my house, the street, 70 feet, maybe 75.
Okay, again, our advice is, is pursue with these other boards. We're gonna focus on making sure the drainage is working, the streets are working, and then the general, the general comportment of the, of the landscape plan, or landscape, broadly speaking, not, not the plantings, but the-
Looking to the wires, those buried wires.
Mr. Cudaro, any thought about the wires? I don't, I don't-
Yeah, it's, it's very uncommon to show electrical routing below the pavement on final as-built plans. Primary routing from utility poles to transformers, that's okay, but site lighting conduit to individual light poles, very, very uncommon to show those.
And DigSafe would identify those when they came out, right? If, if somebody were gonna do-
They, they probably would not, honestly. They're very small conduit, they're tech, they're, while they're line voltage, they're not primary conductors, which is really what DigSafe would, would note.
Okay. Does the board have any other comment? I, I, I feel for the, the citizens, but I'm not sure we can help.
Hold their feet to the fire, we don't give them nothing.
Well, we're, we're not backing down on these other-
This, this particular client has been lying to us for seven years now, Cal.
I appreciate that. Well, and, and unfortunately, the applicant isn't here to speak to these issues, so we, we haven't taken any action, we haven't really, we're still holding significant amount of funds, I believe. Ken, the, the Phase Two bond has not been released, is that correct?
No, you've not released the Phase Two bond.
Great, okay, so that's, what we're trying to exert, what influence we can do legally and ethically to, to move these things to close. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your continued participation, we're glad that you're involved, and we, we actively support, or we support active citizen involvement in this process.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. All right, any other discussion on this point? So, Mr. Buckland, I don't think the board is gonna take any action tonight. I remain extremely concerned, as Mr. Cudaro said, that we don't have certified, he said it much better than I, but we don't have certified plans. We can't, we can't really operate without certified plans.
That's correct. Because that's, that is how the drainage operates, and if it's operating correctly in the, in the storm events, it, it was designed for.
Okay, all right, we'll, let, let us know if, if we get a response from the applicant, and we'll continue to work with him.
We'll do.
Thank you. All right, any, no more discussion on Bay Point, we'll move on.
Same old, same old.
The next one is just a status update, and Josh and I, I think, can give a status update. We have five solar bonds that need to be renewed with one company, Clearway. We're actively engaged with them, they're engaged with us. We got an update back from them with the status. Josh provided some information they were looking for, the status of 53G accounts. They are still evaluating the approach to estimating decommissioning that we're evaluating.
Are we close to getting an answer?
They, they, they said we're working with our contractor, or-
Another consulting company.
Another consulting company. They, they were given the detailed list, and we're waiting to hear back from them. And, and Josh and Mr. Cudaro, you're still, we still need to schedule that meeting to review that. I'm, I'm awaiting Mr. Cudaro's thoughts on that approach. We don't have to discuss it tonight, but if we can schedule a meeting, I, I'd like to go over what we, what we have, what, what we've proposed as an alternative to, to calculating solar decommissioning.
Yes, we'll get, I'll get connected with you, we'll schedule, for sure.
Great, and you did get a copy of the document I provided to Clearway?
I'm not sure I did, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it was a 10-page, 20-page Excel spreadsheet, which I will send to you.
Thank you.
And then if we could just sit down and go over the concept. All right. There's two other bond companies that we sent letters to, Squirrel Island and 160 Tahoma, have we heard back from them?
Neither of them, no.
So in the demand letter, did we say we were gonna shut them down?
I'll have to check the demand letter. I don't, I don't believe we did, I think we just gave them a deadline.
Which they've missed.
Correct.
So I would request that we consult with Attorney Bowen and issue them a cease and desist.
Absolutely.
That's, they're both Borrego, is that-
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, let's, Ken, before we take a motion, do you have any comment?
No, only that I think a vote would be appropriate.
Okay, so I'm looking for a rec, these individual, these two sites were sent a demand letter some months ago, and according to the town planning office, we haven't heard a response. I'm looking for a motion to, to either issue a much more forceful demand letter, or, and I don't, I think the only we can demand at this point is if they don't respond-
Absolutely.
They have to, they have to stop, but we need legal advice on that. So I'm looking for a motion to seek legal advice, and then if appropriate-
Or a cease and desist.
Have a cease and desist.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, a second by Mike Baptiste, and we're talking about-
Identify the two.
It's, uh-
Squirrel Island?
It's Squirrel, I, I don't have a project number on the thing, it's Squirrel Island-
And 160-
And 160 Tahoma.
77 Farm to Market Road?
No, no, that's, that's, those are the Clearway projects.
Yeah, okay.
These are two separate projects.
These would be two separate projects, yeah. They're, they're both Borrego, is that right, Josh?
Um, no, Squirrel Island isn't Borrego.
Oh, okay, all right. So, the, the solar project identified as Squirrel Island and the solar project identified as 160 Tahoma, we're seeking legal advice on issuing a cease and desist. That's the motion. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, Josh, if you could just get back to us, or Ken, or whomever, at the next meeting, and just let us know, I know there's a holiday in there, but if we could at least get a, a temperature on the support for this.
Are we, assuming that Attorney Bowen agrees, can we give them the go-ahead to issue it? I assume we can, with the vote.
I, I, I think, if, if Attorney Bowen says that this is appropriate-
Then the office can issue.
Let's, let's send this, this, these letters.
Are there any more bonds coming up?
That's a question I'll go look at. I think these were all the ones for this year.
Okay.
I think I looked, Josh, I think I looked at the list, these were the only ones for 2024, right?
So, yeah, we, we captured them when we were making the first initial list. This list does not appear to have the-
Let me, can I see that?
Project number, but it does have that 160 Tahoma is Borrego Solar, and 21 Squirrel Island Road is Solbright Renewable. Squirrel Island Road is Solbright Renewable Energy.
Yeah, so just quickly, this is the gospel that I'm, we've had this for a while, but this is, uh, just looking for, um, 2029, 2019, Charlotte Furnace, 2022...
Here's 160s.
That, there's two 160s, so...
Okay.
Um, that's clear.
Oh, there's one here, and that's Borrego.
Yep.
Well, and Borrego sold it, these...
To New Leaf.
These are not New Leaf, they're, they're, this is, these are incorrectly marked, they're, they're Clearway.
Okay.
Um, 2026, 2023, 22, I think we've captured the six that are either expired or had expired this year.
Looks that way, based on the list.
There's, the, the ones identified as Borrego, New Leaf, really should be Clearway on that sheet, I believe. Okay, the next item, before we get to the, to the main event, oh, there's two more items, simple. In February of 2021, February 8th exactly, the planning board voted to rescind a subdivision known as The Pond at Fearing Hill. The vote was taken, um, it was 400, Ken, Mr. Baptiste, I think, was the only member on the board at that time. Do you, you, you voted, so...
The only member who's here.
Um, Sam and I joined after that, just after that. You're the only old guy on the board, so... Anyway, the board took the vote, they voted to rescind, um, the, um...
Subdivision.
The subdivision. Apparently, um, whoever was supposed to act on that never filed with, um, Plymouth Registry of Deeds, a title search, the current, the current builder on the site, which is Mr. Churchill, right?
That's correct, and his title examiner had identified this as a problem, that the subdivision wasn't rescinded, as the vote had, had taken.
Okay, that, that really was the responsibility of the applicant for the subdivision, right?
That's correct.
Who, who was that applicant?
I don't recall.
Okay, so in any case, um, what we're being asked to do is not to vote on the rescission, but I think what you're asking us to do tonight, Ken, is to affirm and state that the planning board did take this vote on February 8th. Is that correct? We're not, you're not asking us to actually, again, rescind the subdivision, right? Or what, what is our vote?
No, I think you had debated it, the board at that time had debated it and decided that the, uh, the vote rescind was correct, and I think you should, but what we need is a reaffirmation that, uh, that vote was, was correct.
Right.
Okay.
Which then gives the applicant the ability to record the, yeah.
Is there any, is there any downside, Ken? It was not built, there's no, is there anyone in the audience who's contesting this rescission? Okay, all right, so I'm looking for a motion to affirm, to reaffirm the vote of the planning board on February 8th, 2021, to rescind the subdivision called The Point at Fearing Hill.
The Pond.
Pond at Fearing Hill.
What did I call it? The Pond.
Because it was never constructed.
Because it was never constructed.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Sam Corbett, a second by Julie Moran, um, and a vote, Mr. Baptiste.
Mike Baptiste, yes.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, Ken, what do we need to, you'll prepare a paper for me to come in and sign, or what?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll prepare a, a decision that states the vote of the board, so you can sign it, and, uh, it can be filed on the land records.
Okay, so we'll give it to what, Mr. Titlebaum, and Mr. Titlebaum is responsible for filing this, or Mr. Churchill?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, he is.
Okay, not anyone in the office, and not the planning board, it's not...
That's correct.
Acknowledged.
Okay, all right, um...
Peter will be notified.
Yes.
By Ken.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to have a name attached to it.
Thank you. Um, okay, since April, the planning board has been migrating away from the, the old system of filing and tracking documents, um, to a, a system alternatively named Viewpoint, or open.gov, which is a standard, uh, tool that's being used by many boards across the state, and many boards in town. It is a central place for organizing, uh, applications, building permits, all, every application is then affixed by map and lot. So we, we are, uh, on a journey to migrate to that. I think, um, there still remains a little confusion around numbering, and, so if you could just give us a status on where we're at, we're still committed to moving in that direction, is that correct? I'm looking at Josh.
That, that's correct.
Okay, are there any impediments that the board can help remove?
I don't believe so, no.
Um, okay, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, I believe the, uh, the, the problem with the, uh, the system right now is that the accounting system had already, uh, been proceeding with the numbering system that, uh, we had in place previously before Viewpoint. And so there's a, to maintain consistency in that, in that realm of accounting, uh, it was, uh, the desire was to use the existing, uh, labeling system, numbering system for the, the files.
And, and I understand that's not possible.
What's not possible?
Using that numbering scheme in Viewpoint.
Viewpoint cannot establish the current way that the office numbers applications, Viewpoint cannot do.
All right, so it seems to me that we, we, we're not requiring the accounting department to change internal numbering, and it, it seems to me that it's maintaining a simple cross-reference in the background would reduce confusion for the citizens, the applicants, the board. Is that something we can just hide from the general public? I'm not asking the, the accounting department to change anything, we just need to, to build a cross-reference in the back. Is that possible?
It is possible.
Um, Ken is, thank you, I, I would think it is, but I'm not the one who has to do it, so...
Yes, it is possible.
All right, so the plan is we, the board will continue to work with the planning office, um, to make that transition, and try and make it as seamless as possible for the applicants and for the citizens, and in the meantime, uh, I will commit personally, where there is confusion remaining, I will attempt at all meetings to re, continue to emphasize what that mapping is. And, and the first, the first big application that this has caused some problem is, is the next one we're about to discuss. Um, so we're on a journey, I appreciate that it's, it's got some potholes in the road, um, and it, it's making everyone's life a little more interesting. So we'll get there, but, um, please, if we get to a meeting and we open a hearing, or we're discussing the plan, and it's not clear, ask, and we'll try and continue to make it clear. But this is a back-office problem that we're trying to fix. Okay, any other comments, questions from the board? Ken, can anything else you want to add, or comment on?
Uh, no, not until later on in the agenda.
Okay, no, no, I meant, on this, on this point. Okay, um, and then Josh, we're, okay, we're, we're going to work with you, we'll, we'll figure out, and you are going to go in, Jane, and, and do some work as well.
I was away, and I am just recently back, so...
So you're gonna, you're gonna follow up with Josh on, I, I think that, um, our next applicant is, is going to have been the first applicant that really went through this aggressively, um, perhaps as we, we pursue the, the public hearing. Comments would be, or input would be welcome from the applicant on the process, and things that we could do to make it easier, as a side note. Please understand, we're trying to get there. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this, this project's pretty, pretty simple up till now, so we don't mind this complication.
Okay, this is a very simple project. Okay, so the next, um, item on the agenda will be 1024 Wareham MA3 LLC Site Plan Review Special Permit, 91101 Fearing Hill Road, Wareham, Massachusetts. The 1024, as we just noted, is the old numbering scheme, I'll give you the reference. Um, is that the same as this, Joe, or is this additional? I, I've got these to hand out. Is this different than that?
Those are...
Okay, so everybody gets one of these.
Who's this from?
Who's this from?
This was the original application.
Yeah.
That's the applicant, this is the, under you, policy about submitting exhibits and test.
Thank you, thank you. And, and, um, could I just, it's, it wasn't a policy, it was sort of a, a request to make it easier, so, but I appreciate that you took the time. Now, uh, before I open the public hearing, we're going to do, this is going to be a little different than, um, what we, uh, have done, although we did this for Mr. Shattahan, I think, a year ago. I'm going to open the public hearing, so I'll read the public hearing notice, we'll take a vote to open the public hearing. Before we go any further, I will read into the record, so that they become officially part of the record, the, um, evidence that was submitted on the two prior projects, and we'll take a motion and a vote, uh, to read those into the record. Uh, I will ask that we waive me reading the list of artifacts, I will if, if we need to read them, I have them all listed. The important point to note is, the position the board is going to take is that if it's not posted on the website, it's not going to become part of the record, okay? Because we don't know that it exists. So, that means if you think that there's something that should have been posted, or that you submitted on one of those earlier applications, I request that you resubmit it. Um, that's, uh, we can't, we can't read into the record something that we don't know that exists. So we'll take a vote on the, um, 1221, or, excuse me, 2121, 1222, and because I think for the 1222 application, the volume of, um, records exceeded what the, uh, website can hold, there was a separate bucket of input, so we'll read those into the record. Okay, once, um, I read those into the record, again, before we let the applicant speak, I have a summary, I have spent the last six weeks going through all of those documents, all the requirements, and I can't find everything, so I'm going to go through, it's not going to stop us, but we're going to identify things that we, I wasn't able to find, not, not citizens' comments, but application components, and then we'll work with the applicant to make sure they get posted or identified, and, and that will allow us to continue. It's not going to stop us from moving ahead tonight. For the record, the new project number that we're going to identify this is, is on the Viewpoint site, and it's identified as PLAN, P-L-A-N, space, 24 dash 4. So all application material the applicant has submitted, um, revised application, so this is a new application, it's, it's on the, um, the Viewpoint site. If you go to the, the planning board site, there's a, there's a hyperlink right on that site that takes you to the new site, so it's not where the old project material was, so that it's going to be posted in a new place, okay? Uh, anybody who is having a problem finding that, um, can call the planning office, Josh, Josh will help, um, and we'll, we'll get you there. But it's just, it's, it's same as before, just a different place. It has some neat benefits. Um, so, once we get there, I will then summarize for the record, the analysis that I've done over the last six weeks, and identify what I can't find, what I think should be there, and then, as I said, we'll work with the applicant. They, they, they all existed at some point, I just can't find them, so we just need to get them re-established, and I have a list, and, and we'll be able to come up with that, I think. Um, so that's how I'd like to proceed, and then at that point, we'll ask the applicant to make his introductory remarks. And, by the way, welcome back.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Um, does the board have any objection to the approach I outlined?
Thank you very much.
I, I have one more comment on me. Uh, Mr. Shannon, do you have any concern with what I've outlined?
Uh, I'm just wondering, Mr. Chairman, if the reverse might be more productive, if I make my presentation under your new request, which identifies the exhibits, I think are relevant to this public hearing.
Okay.
See what we're missing? Compare?
Yeah, then we could compare that, okay. All right, so, fine, before, before, I'll read the things into the record, and then before listing, uh, what I think I couldn't find, we'll, we'll, um, we'll see where, we'll...
If they came from us, Ms. Chairman, we'll have them if you can.
There's nothing that I couldn't find that you shouldn't have been the, the producer of. I'm not asking you for any citizens' comments or any other evidence, it's just your body of work. Okay. Again, before the public, without getting, is anybody in this, in the audience confused by what I just said? Okay, thank you. All right, so the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to open the public hearing, I'm going to read the statement, and I need a, a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
No, no, you can't open it till I read. Notice of public hearing, the Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 25th, 2024, at 9:00. At 6:00 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, O2571, to consider position, petition, 1024, old numbering scheme, um, for a Site Plan Review Special Permit from the requirements of Section 590, Article 15, and Table 3 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws, to Wareham MA, MA3 LLC care of Atlantic Design Engineers Incorporated, PO Box 1051, Sandwich, Massachusetts, O2563, seeking construction of a large-scale ground-mounted solar vota, phot, excuse me, photovoltaic solar project on the upland portion of the site, located at 91 and 100 Fearing Hill Road, Wareham, Massachusetts. Assessors map, 91 and 74 lots, 1,000 and 1,007 in the R60 zoning district. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, so before, you, I want to read the other items into the record, and then we'll...
May I vote?
Huh?
Don't need a vote.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I need a motion and a second, I, I'm, don't, don't let me get ahead of myself. Motion by Sam Corbett, second by Julie Moran. This is a vote to open the public hearing. Mike?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, now, Carl, where are your notes? Okay, the first thing is, I would like a motion... To read into the record the items publicly posted on the Wareham Planning Board project website for a project identified 21-21. I have a page and a half, two pages, three pages of documents, which I can read individually. I'd like a motion to read this, to accept this in the record and waive the reading of the items. I will give this to Patty, so they're in the minutes.
Okay. Motion to waive the reading of the exhibits which are posted on the website for, is it 21-21?
21-21.
21, yes.
And make them part of the record for this project.
Record for this, for this new application.
This application.
Correct.
So I have a motion from Julie Moran, a second by Sam Corbett. All in favor?
Mike Duffey, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
And the chair votes aye. This list I will give to Patty to attach to the minutes. Again, for 2121, which was the first application, if you believe you submitted evidence or a comment that's not here, it's not on the record at this point, and I apologize for that if it's not. But this is, this is what I could find. Okay, the next item, I would like a motion to waive the reading of the items from 2220, excuse me, 1222, and accept them into the record.
Motion? Are you making the motion?
No, no, I'm asking for the motion.
Yes, yes, okay. Motion to accept the documents in the public record for 12-22 and to enter them into the record and to waive the reading of the same.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Julie Moran, a second from Sam Corbett. All in favor?
Mike Duffey, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye, sorry.
And the chair votes aye. And then the last item is related to the submission for 1222. We had a separate category because of space limitations, file submissions from Wareham residents, and I would like to read these into the record and waive, waive the enumeration, waive the reading.
Motion, and this is for 1222, correct?
Well, it was file submissions, and I think they were associated with 1222, yes.
Which is to waive the reading of the file submissions made, the balance of them from this, they're all from citizens?
Yes, these are all from citizens.
Citizens' comments, evidence submitted 12-22, and that they be entered into the record.
Second.
Motion by Julie Moran, second by Sam Corbett. All in favor?
Mike Duffey, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Okay.
And the chair.
Oh, the chair votes aye, I'm sorry, yes. So let me get myself organized. Okay, that's that. All right, so I, we're going to change the order a little bit. I was going to list the documents that I was unable to find, but will, the applicant has submitted. So for the record, Mr. Shanahan, can we read what you've given us into the record, what it, what is? This is a letter dated November 25, 2024, regarding the project. It's to the board, and it's a fairly large document with attachments, but, and exhibits. So we're going to read this into the record as well.
I am going to present it this evening.
And we're going to let Mr. Shanahan discuss it. So thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here. Just to be clear and for the record, this document, I've tried to conform with the requests that I received from the chair with regard to the submission of testimony and exhibits by outlining them as part of the presentation this evening, for the record. I've given a copy of this to each of the five board members, Mr. Farady, we've uploaded it to Viewpoint, and Mr. Buckland, if it assists the planning office at all, I can provide the same presentation to you in Word format, so you can pick and choose what you may. Are we good, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much.
Going on the record, in accordance with the standards for submitting evidence recently adopted by the Planning Board, Wareham MA3 LLC, hereafter called the Developer, is submitting the following in support of its long pending proposal to develop a ground-mounted solar project at 91 and 101 Fearing Hill Road, hereafter called the Project. We believe that this information will assist the board in making an informed decision on the subject application for Site Plan Review Special Permit. The Developer is a wholly owned subsidiary of RWE Clean Energy. RWE Clean Energy is a result of the combining of RWE Renewables Americas with Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses back in March 2023. For the record, my name is Joseph Shanahan, Senior Manager of Project Development for RWE Clean Energy.
Can you spell your name for the record, please?
RWE Clean Energy LLC, a subsidiary of RWE Group, is one of the largest renewable energy companies in the United States, with its corporate headquarters in Austin, Texas, and Valhalla, New York, and additional offices in Chicago, Boston, and Fairfax, Virginia. We have a significant track record of developing, constructing, and operating renewable energy facilities, with more than 15 years in the United States and a corporate history dating back 125 years. RWE Clean Energy has secure investment-grade credit ratings, assets valued at over $138 billion, and annual revenues of $38 billion. We have over 2,000 employees here in the U.S., and are the second-largest solar owner and operator in the U.S., with a renewable energy portfolio of about 8 gigawatts of installed capacity, including solar, battery storage, and onshore wind. RWE Clean Energy also supports federal agencies, private businesses, cities, towns, and homeowners in meeting their energy goals. We have a development pipeline of 24 gigawatts of onshore wind, solar, and battery storage, which is one of the largest development platforms in the United States. The Developer has applied to the Planning Board for approval of a ground-mounted solar facility, which includes a battery energy storage system, or BES, B-E-S-S. From the many public hearings held over the last nearly four years by this board, members of this board likely know the general characteristics of general ground-mounted community solar projects here in Massachusetts as well as I do. But I ask your patience so I can introduce those characteristics for the record. Let me begin by stating what this solar project will not do when compared to almost any other type of use which might be developed at this location in Wareham. It will not emit any noise or odors, it will not create any glare during the day, nor because there will be no lighting at the site, any illumination at night, and it will not produce any trash, or litter, or any other form of waste. The project will not create any traffic, as once construction is complete, there are only occasional vehicular visits to the site for routine inspections and repairs and landscaping, and the project will not require sanitary sewer service or utilize any of the local water supply. Further, it will not create any burden for local fire, police, or other first responder departments. Finally, and perhaps most significant, when compared to the development of a residential subdivision at this location, this project will not put any additional children in the town school system. Having stated what this solar project will not do, please let me state, for the record, what it will do. First, it will bring additional tax revenue to the town, and again, it will do so without putting any additional burden on community services or infrastructure. Second, for property owners and even renters, 70% of whom cannot put solar installations on their homes or businesses, community solar projects allow access to solar-generated power for all Eversource customers, affording them the opportunity to receive a discount on their utility bills. Finally, almost, unlike almost any other use which might be developed, when the life of a solar project comes to an end, the solar equipment will be removed and the site is restored to its previous condition, and the town of Wareham has ensured this removal and restoration process by requiring a decommissioning plan and decommissioning surety for every solar project. Having put the general characteristics of this community solar project on the record, I shall now present the specifics of this application and its history, which unfortunately is lengthy. Let me begin by stating that this developer is keenly aware of the controversy which arose over New Leaf Energy as successor to Borrego Solar Systems. Having gone through the lengthy and difficult town permitting processes for two of its solar projects, only to announce to the Planning Board some two years afterward that it required extensions to those permits granted so as to allow it, quote, "to complete the process with Eversource to obtain interconnection service agreements," close quote, for the projects. Accordingly, this developer wants the record to be very clear that it had its interconnection service agreement with Eversource before it began the local permitting processes for this project, and it would never have put the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, or the town of Wareham through these nearly 42 months of arduous proceedings without it. The Developer applied to Eversource for its interconnection service agreement, or an ISA, over seven years ago, on July 28, 2017. We've been at this for over seven years. Subsequently, after a nearly four-year study period and review process, the agreement was issued on March 25, 2021, and the Developer signed it on April 12, 2021. Only then, on May 17, 2021, did the Developer submit its applications and plans to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. The fact of the date of that application and the date on which the agreement was signed is demonstrated by Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2. Those had not previously been submitted, and I have submitted them this evening, Mr. Chairman. After nearly a year of proceedings and many sessions of the public hearing in 2021, a member of the Planning Board resigned, leaving only four members eligible to vote on the project. Accordingly, at the Developer's request, the board voted on April 11, 2022, to allow the withdrawal of the original application and allow its resubmission in the exact same form as the original application. That would have been file number 21-21, with the entire contents of the board's existing file transferred to the new file for the resubmital, which was file number 12-22, in order that there would be five members eligible to vote. As you're aware, this past spring, another board member resigned, and the board voted again on August 12, 2024, to allow a withdrawal and resubmission of this application, resulting in this new public hearing this evening on November 25. The original plan submitted for this project nearly four years ago showed 26.76 acres of clearing for a 4-megawatt AC project on this 44-acre site. The current plans that are before you this evening show that that clearing has now been reduced by 33% to approximately 18 acres, along with a number of other revisions in order to incorporate all of the comments and recommendations made by the town's consulting hydrogeologist, Neil Price of Horsley-Witten Group, and the town's consulting engineer, Charles Rowley, and to obtain the approvals and sign-offs by both of these town consultants to the Planning Board. That new plan set is to be considered Exhibit 3, and our consulting engineer, Rich Tabazinski, who is here this evening, will review those for you later in the presentation. The reports, review, and sign-offs by the Planning Board's two consultants are previously submitted and on file with the Planning Board as Exhibits 4 and Exhibit 5. During the past 42 months, the following has also taken place in connection with developing the plans for the project for this Planning Board. The Developer conducted a site walk with the Planning Board on July 21, 2021, to view and assess the visual impact, if any, of the project. Per the board's request, the Developer then commissioned and provided line of site diagrams for the board's consideration. As a result, and per the board's request, the Developer then redesigned the access drive, so instead of going straight in from Fearing Hill Road, it goes in at an angle, lessening its visibility from the road, and then landscaping along the access drive was added to lessen the visual impact still further. While speaking further with the board at its meeting on July 25, 2021, on the matters of visual impact and added plantings, the Developer also provided the board with the following commitments. The Developer shall increase the buffer north of the DeMello property to 85 feet, which is 70% more than the 50 feet required in the bylaw, locating the project 170 feet from the closest or northwest corner of the DeMello residence. This revision resulted in the loss of still two more rows of panels in the solar array, but it did accomplish the purpose of lessening the visual impact as much as possible. The Developer also agreed to post a $15,000 cash bond with the town as surety to address any unexpected visual impact from the project after its completion, to be administered as follows. Upon completion of the project, the town and its staff shall revisit the line of site diagrams which have been submitted by the Developer, inspect the site, and determine if additional plantings are required to lessen the visual impact of the project. In the area with the six-foot-tall green giant avivati vegetation screening will have been installed in accordance with the site plan and/or in the area between the developer property and the project. If additional plantings are required, the town shall notify the Developer, and the Developer shall submit to the town a plan to address the additional planting requirements. Upon the town's approval of the plan, the Developer shall, within a reasonable time, install the additional plantings as shown on the plan. If the Developer does not install the additional plantings within a reasonable time after approval of the plan, the town may utilize the bond amount to install the additional plantings. Further, the Developer shall, for a period of two years after the project is completed, post a $10,000 cash bond with the town as surety to repair or replace any plantings which don't or won't establish, and, instead of thriving, decline, to be administered as follows. Upon completion of the project and for a period of two years after, the Developer shall, within a reasonable time, repair or replace any plantings which do not or will not establish. If the Developer does not repair or replace such plantings within a reasonable time, the town may utilize the bond amount for such repairs or replacements. Excuse me. At one of the first sessions of the public hearing before the Planning Board, Mr. King, the then-chair, requested that the Developer eliminate a number of utility poles proposed to service the project, and after extended negotiations with the utility, the Developer was able to do that. Mr. King, while acknowledging that there would be substantial tree cutting for the project, also asked that the Developer commit to making no profit from cutting the trees in connection with the project. As a result, the Developer had a tree inventory prepared by a Massachusetts licensed forester. He valued the timber at $19,690, and the Developer committed to pay that amount to the town to fulfill the commitment. committed to pay that amount to the town to fulfill the commitment to make no profit from the cutting of the trees. That is substantiated by item, or Exhibit Six, which is a letter from me to the planning board, which included the tree inventory certified by the Massachusetts-licensed forester that has been previously submitted to and is on file with the planning board. Further, in addressing the matter of tree clearing, the developer has submitted evidence that the environmental trade-off between maintaining the trees and removing them is a matter of science, not of argument. The greenhouse gas offsets resulting from the solar project, based upon the EPA's greenhouse gas calculator, will be four thousand eight-hundred-thirty-one metric tons of carbon dioxide, that's CO2, each year for the life of the project. That is the equivalent of taking over twelve million passenger car miles driven and their fossil fuel emissions off the road each year. By comparison, it would take fifty-nine-hundred acres of forest to sequester that much CO2 in a year, a ratio of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven to one compared to the number of acres of trees to be cut for this solar project. There has been evidence submitted as Exhibit Seven substantiating that, and that's on file with the planning board. The developer has conferred with the Wareham Fire Department, has established the detection, alarm, suppression systems to be used at the project, and agreed to the department's request to provide emergency responder training in connection with the project. The letter from the fire department previously filed with the planning board is Exhibit Eight, and the draft emergency response guidelines have been submitted in our Exhibit Nine. When the board requested evidence that the project complied with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass. DEP, noise policy, the developer engaged HMMH, an internationally-recognized firm, to conduct a study, at a cost of seventeen thousand dollars, by the way, which concluded that with the installation of sound barrier walls around certain equipment pads, the project will fully comply with the noise policy. That report has been previously submitted and is on file, and we would designate that as Exhibit Ten. The plans for the project have been revised to include those sound barrier walls. In response to questions of possible historic, cultural, or archaeological resources at the site, the developer has submitted a report indicating that, based upon local, state, and federal data, there are no such resources at the site. That report has been submitted to the board and is on file and would be designated as Exhibit Eleven. Those findings have since been more fully substantiated by an intensive archaeological survey conducted by the Public Archaeology Laboratory. That report is on file with the planning board, and we designate that as Exhibit Twelve. And the findings of that archaeological survey have been reviewed, accepted, and certified by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Again, that certification has been filed with the planning board, is on file with the board, and we designate that as Exhibit Thirteen. In response to questions of possible threatened or endangered species at the site, the developer submitted a report indicating that there are no such species at the site. However, out of an abundance of caution for the endangered Plymouth Redberry, excuse me, not Redberry, Red-bellied turtle map within the IPAC mapper, the developer has elected to carry out a voluntary Mass. Wildlife Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, Turtle Protection Plan, TPP, that will be overseen and conducted by a natural heritage-approved turtle biologist. This TPP will be designed to ensure protection of the Plymouth Red-bellied turtle prior to and during construction of the solar facility. The cost of that turtle protection plan is twenty-two thousand dollars, and that whole process is documented with Exhibit Fourteen already on file with the planning board. The developer submitted and then updated a decommissioning plan and cost estimate to provide for the posting of a surety bond in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-eight dollars for the decommissioning of the project, reviewed and updated every five years to account for inflation. As you're aware, the board subsequently adopted a policy of establishing that the cost estimate of a decommissioning plan should be based upon the formula set forth in the NREL Technical Report, which is entitled Best Practices at the End of the Photovoltaic System Performance Period. In conformity with that new policy and that formula, the developer has submitted a revised decommissioning plan and cost estimate, which now provides for the posting of a surety bond in the amount of eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. That resubmission is on file with the planning board and designated Exhibit Fifteen. Perhaps most significantly, in response to concerns expressed by the owners of neighboring properties and members of the planning board about the possibility that the project would adversely impact groundwater flows above ground and underground from the site to the Farring Hill Road, the developer agreed to fund the town's hiring of Horsley-Witten, an internationally-recognized hydrogeology firm, to prepare a hydrogeologic and hydrologic study on the project to the planning board, for which the developer has reimbursed the planning board in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars for those services. That Horsley-Witten report is on file with the planning board, and we would ask that it be designated as Exhibit Sixteen. After the developer addressed all of the consultant's comments and incorporated all of his recommendations, including the suggestion that the project adhere to the stricter Rhode Island guidance into its plans, the town's consultant, Horsley-Witten, opined in letters to the planning board and the conservation commission that the project will not be a detrimental use at the site, and signed off on the project. Again, that report and letter from Horsley-Witten is designated as Exhibit Four. As part of addressing the Horsley-Witten recommendations, the developer has agreed to work with the municipal maintenance department to pay for the cleaning of the culvert at the railroad bed and keep the culvert clear for the life of the solar project. Further, the developer worked with Horsley-Witten to develop a life project monitoring program to follow up on the testing which we've already done at the site. This will involve inspections at monitoring wells and issuance of reports every two weeks during the six-to-nine months from start of construction until completion of the project, and post-construction monitoring inspections, and a report after any large storm event. The cost for this two-year monitoring program will be approximately fifty thousand dollars. Finally, as had been suggested but not required by Mr. Rowley, the developer contacted abutting property owners who would express concerns about groundwater flows and the town maintenance department, and asked if they would allow off-site monitoring wells to be placed on their property. Neither the town nor the neighboring property owners responded. Evidence of our outreach to the neighborhood is designated at Exhibit Seventeen. That had not been filed, Mr. Chairman. It's filed this evening. Evidence of our letter to the town maintenance department designated as Exhibit Eighteen is also submitted this evening. After the countless meetings among the developer, the planning board's consulting hydrogeologist, Horsley-Witten, and the planning board's consulting engineer, Mr. Rowley, the developer had also addressed all of Mr. Rowley's comments and incorporated all of his recommendations into the plan. Mr. Rowley also applied, opined to the planning board and the conservation commission that the project will not be detrimental use at the site, and signed off on the project. Again, Mr. Rowley's sign-off is on file with the planning board and is Exhibit Five. And the developer was required to reimburse the planning board the sum of fifty-two thousand dollars for Mr. Rowley's engineering services to the town in reviewing the project. In response to questions as to whether the panels to be used for the project might contain PFRs.
Excuse me, Mr. Shanahan? It's outside? Okay. We can't deal with that there. Okay, please.
In response to questions as to whether the panels to be used for the project might contain PFRs, the developer has provided a copy of an email chain, including a statement by the manufacturer, that the Jinko modules to be used in the project, which, by the way, are a requirement of the Eversource interconnection application at Exhibit One, do not contain PFRs. That has been submitted and is on file with the planning board as Exhibit Nineteen. Further, as referenced in the Horsley-Witten conditional approval letter, again at Exhibit Four, the developer has also agreed to post a bond with the town to allow the town to hire an inspector to inspect the panels as they are being delivered to the project site to ensure that they are the Jinko panels, as the developer has represented to the planning board. On November twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, just two years ago, the local conservation commission issued an order of conditions which denied the project under the State Wetlands Protection Act and the local wetlands bylaw. The developer appealed the decision under the state act to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and under the local bylaw to the Plymouth County Superior Court. As this board is aware, the zoning bylaw requires that favorable orders of conditions be issued before the planning board can vote on an application. Accordingly, the planning board has had to postpone its decision on this project for nearly two years since the commission's denial. On May ten, two thousand twenty-four, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection issued a superseding order of conditions approving the project and overturning the conservation commission's denial of the project under the State Wetlands Protection Act. A copy of that superseding order has been filed with the planning board and is on record. We designate that as Exhibit Twenty. This week, the conservation commission entered upon an agreement for judgment in connection with the Superior Court appeal whereby the project, as denied by the commission, is now approved, and the commission will promptly issue an order of conditions under the local wetlands bylaw. With the issuance of the state's superseding order of conditions and the local order of conditions, the planning board may now act on this application in accordance with Section fifteen fifty-one of the zoning bylaws. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to introduce Rich Tabazinski from Atlantic Design, who has been working on this project with us for the last four years and was so actively involved in working with your two consultants, Mr. Price and Mr. Rowley.
Before we switch gears, can we address, first of all, thank you very much for a well-organized presentation, and to that, I have some questions.
Okay. However you want to do it.
Is Mr. Tabazinski going to speak on top of that, or is he going to? You spoke to the body of evidence, which is what I have some questions about.
Okay. He's going to review the site plan.
Okay. So can we hold off on that?
However you want to do it.
No, no, great. I want to get, so, a couple of comments and then some questions, and then I'll, if the board has any questions, but I was prepared for this part. So first, to the citizens and thanking the applicant, as part of the planning board's move forward to try and better organize evidence and on these large applications, we submitted, Mr. Shanahan called it a policy, it was more guidance on how it would help us if evidence were submitted, and that letter is on file with the planning office, and I had asked that it get posted, but it was basically much in the way that Mr. Shanahan outlined, a statement of evidence, well, actually, for citizens, a statement of request. What it is do you want us to do with this evidence, then the evidence supporting, and then a closing remark. So, much the way Mr. Shanahan outlined it. Again, not a policy, it was a request. I will report, and Mr. Shanahan, some evidence has been coming in, and some citizens are very much trying to conform with that. I encourage you to look at the Plan twenty-four dash four site, which is where the planning board is post, excuse me, planning office is posting those records, because new evidence is coming in, so it's there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I recognize that there have been submissions made. I'm not sure the board should determine any or all of them to be evidence.
Well, that's, the, let me get to that. The citizens have submitted it. At the end of the process, and we tried this with our last project, the applicant and the citizens will be offered the opportunity to submit findings of fact, which is then what becomes the evidence. The findings of fact need to be based on what has been submitted through the course of the public hearing, and my guidance, at the request of many folks, well, we don't understand what you're looking for, so I tried that one, will make it easier to reconcile that. So we'll get to the end. It will become evidence at the point where we establish findings of fact at the end of the process. And again, I understand that some citizens may not be able to conform to that. We'll deal with that. But thank you very much for your submission. Rather than going through my list of things that I couldn't find, I think my issue, Mr. Shanahan, which means with the applicant and the planning office, just some research work, many of the items that you listed as on the record, I agree that we have discussed them. I can't find all of them. So what we need to do is, is take that list of anything that you didn't give us new evidence on and make sure that we can find copies of it, either on the previous record or get new copies of it. And I, if you want, I can send you what I couldn't find, for example.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's just a reconciliation process. You did a very good job. I'll reconcile if I think, there were a couple of things I didn't hear you mention.
I get paid a little bit better than you do, Mr. Schles.
I get paid in love and affection from the, so, there were several versions of the stormwater report. We just need to identify what the last version was and make sure that it's on record. I think it was the one dated May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, but it may not be the latest. That's what we need to, so a stormwater report. Landscape plan, I couldn't find a landscape plan, and I didn't hear you mention it in your summary. Engineering plans, Mr. Tabazinski's going to speak to, electrical diagrams. Noise documentation you addressed, we'll double-check that. Operations and maintenance plan, we've talked about it, it was required, but I can't find it. We talked about the interconnection agreement. The decommissioning plan you talked to, I can't find the actual document. I know we went over it, and on the decommissioning.
The revised resubmital?
Whatever the last one was, I don't, we don't, all the early ones don't matter. It's just, what is the last one? And in our previous sessions, two applications, we didn't really talk about batteries. Batteries have become a much bigger area of focus in more recent applications, so I don't believe the decommissioning plan mentioned batteries. Just, we'll double-check that, but also, as we speak forward, we're going to need more information just on the battery component. Traffic study not required. We addressed the hydrological study. I believe the. I believe the final one is dated May 21, 2022. I did see a copy of that. We just need to get that and make sure that's... Did you... I don't know if you mentioned the date.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, Horsley-Witten is your consultant. I wouldn't have submitted anything from Horsley.
I'm just... Let's just make sure we get the final one on the record, and we should find it. But I believe it's dated May 21, 2022. You mentioned the archeo...
Paid $42,000 for us, the chair. I want you to have it, believe me.
I just want to make sure we get it on the record so that we can... Because some of the new board members maybe haven't had a chance to review that. The archaeological survey you addressed. There's one thing, and Mr. Tabazinski, I'm sure is going to mention it on the latest plan, but you didn't mention it, was the phased implementation plan, which was very important to the whole concept of managing and mitigating impacts. You did submit a phased implementation plan. I think it's buried out there. We should... And you actually... It's stamped on the top of your...
Site plans, yeah.
Site plans, yeah. So we should just make sure we have the right copy of that and get that visible so all the citizens can read that as well. You addressed sight lines. So I think you've addressed all the things. We should... Josh, we should just work with the applicant. Everywhere he said...
If you can just share that list with me by email, Mr. Chairman.
I'll email it to you. Everywhere the applicant said, "This is on file with the planning office," I don't challenge that statement. I believe we've talked about them. I just couldn't find them. So we should make sure they're easy to find. And I think citizens have asked for that in the past. So we should just get those all visible. And, okay. So I think that... Let's just go through here. Mr. Shanahan did send us a letter on the new decommissioning estimate. It's not posted, but I saw the letter. It exists. We should just get it posted. Oh, excuse me. On the decommissioning estimate, and I don't want to derail the process. If we could leave it where it is at the moment, we've got a long way to go. Several applicants have expressed concerns about that approach.
I'm not surprised.
No, no, that's okay. We needed something. We are trialing a new approach, which you heard me mention to Mr. Cordero. I don't want to derail this at the moment, but let's see how that goes, and we might be open to a different approach.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, we'll do whatever the planning board asks us to.
Thank you. I'm just letting you know, we hear what the applicants are saying. We're trying to find the best way forward. The numbers are coming out about the same. It's just a different approach. Or it's actually... I think it's actually the same approach that NREL used, but it's a 20-page detailed decommissioning plan, as opposed to just a number that that all distilled down into. So we can look at that for the future. Hydrology report, historical, stormwater report, we've got to make sure we get the rate one. I want to get all the peer reviews organized. We talked about the sequenced phasing. We're going to talk about a SWIFT review. Batteries are sort of new. We didn't talk about batteries in the past, so that'll be a new discussion point.
Just a quick question, because you've been there before, Mr. Chair. Is it the interest of the planning board, of the nuts and bolts of how they work, or is it really a concern about safety?
Health, safety, and welfare. What happens in the event?
Just so I know where the focus is.
I mean, there may be people who really want to know how they work. I have a general concept. You could do a general...
I think it is composition, how it works, safety issues, details about the construction of it. So it really is a detailed description of the system.
And then what happens in a catastrophic event and the impact of...
Just on 38 of them in Connecticut, New York, we have all that.
We'll get it. Great. But what happens to the water system? This system, if there were a catastrophic event, will flow into the watershed. Other systems are right on top of the aquifer, but we're concerned about a catastrophic event and its impact on our water supply.
Yep.
So, thank you. Your summary addressed many of my concerns. And again, before we let Mr. Tabazinski expound any questions from the board, Julie, I know you had questions about items. Did you get a...
I did. Just kind of... I've got my own questions, but some of what came up is the BES system, I think, is something that I have a concern about. And it sounds like you're prepared to tell us all... Describe all aspects of the system.
Correct.
And to also discuss with us what would happen if it was determined that the fire department determined they were going to let it burn, they're going to put water... Eliminate it with water, whatever the issues are. And also, you said you have a monitoring system. Does that also signal to you when there is a malfunction that might eventually lead to an issue, rather than being reactive? There's a fire, and you learn about it. So... And you are... Have put many of these systems in place, so we would ask you to be in a position to explain to all of us how exactly it works, what the interaction is with the fire department. One of my concerns is, and there's some documents we're going to enter into the record, about the effect of global warming on our climate, whether it is large rain events or the drought that we're currently experiencing, which layers on all that you are presenting and you are proposing to install. So I look at, from even three years ago, when I was not even living in Wareham, you came before the board. My concern is that things have changed. And my hope is, Mr. Shanahan, that, given all the work that you are doing every day with these systems, that you are looking at what a large rain event would do to this project, and that you feel very comfortable that the way this is designed will not be a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of this community. So I'm looking at how, even in three years, the science has changed, as you said, and I'm going to be interested in hearing what... How you will give us assurances that this will not impact the health, safety, and welfare of this community in ways that maybe we aren't anticipating, or would have no way of knowing, or that the science is telling us we need to be very careful about. So it's kind of my opening remarks.
Sam? Mike?
This time, no.
Jane?
I think the only other thing that has not really been discussed is the environmental justice communities, which perhaps back when we were still in discussion two years ago was not an issue, but it has become one. So I think that that probably needs to be addressed. Wareham is an environmental justice community, and so I think that needs to be considered.
That's a rather broad umbrella. Can you be a little more specific of what you're looking at and expecting?
Well, I think that I would like to hear from the community what their thoughts are on it and how that comes into play.
Oh, you shall, I'm sure.
Well, and I think, too, that Massachusetts made it very clear, both in their regulations, but also in the Clean Act that was just signed this week.
Yes, correct.
That the protection of environmental justice communities at the heart of our climate change efforts, including a reaffirmation of that in the Clean Energy Act. So I think that there is... I don't want to speak for our citizens, but there is a concern about the cumulative effect of now going on, what, 25 projects, some of which, before, as I said, I've moved to Wareham. And the impact that it has on environmental justice community is a concern of ours. Putting aside what our engineers are telling us and all that we've learned, but we would be interested and would ask that you give some thought to how we could... How you could mitigate some of the effects that might impact us as an environmental justice community. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that opening remark. Thank you for the well-prepared summary. Mr. Tabazinski, we have a special requirement for you. Can you please stand and raise your right hand and swear that you're going to tell the truth, the whole truth? We don't expect Mr. Shanahan to...
I do.
Thank you. And spell your name for the record, please.
Yes, it's Tabazinski. It's spelled T-A-B-A-C-Z-Y-N-S-K-I.
Thank you. Patty, hopefully you got that.
I have just a board, and I'm not sure the best location to put it.
That's a question for John.
Can I just... One more point. Thank you again for, both of you, working through all these exhibits. I think all of... I speak for the rest of the members. It was a challenge to locate all of this, so thank you.
And it was a really concise...
Yes. So now our job is to... Anything that we weren't able to find, to find it, and obviously have... May have further questions on everything as we go through it. So thank you.
So a request to the planning office. Now we have a bar that every future application has to get over, has to be better. So let's help applicants organize their applications so that we can process them more effectively. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers, and I wanted to run through the site plans and some aspects of the design with you. I'll try to be more brief than Mr. Shanahan, hopefully. But basically, the set of site plans that was submitted over the last several years, the last... You'll notice in the revision boxes, basically, there's four to five revision dates on here, but the latest full set of plans was dated 9/29/2022.
Oh, wait, hang on. I probably have sets in here. Wait, this is one thing? Sorry. One, two, three. Okay. So Patty, for the record, I'm handing out...
This is just Sheets 5, 8, and 9, and then this is the remainder of the package, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, the reason for that is, three of the sheets, Sheets 5, 8, and 9, have a further revision date of 10/14/2022. That was because there was a few minor leftover comments from your town engineer, Charles Rowley, that addressed... Just happened to make some small amendments on those three sheets, so...
I guess so. Thank you.
Those Sheets 5, 8, and 9, their last revision date was 10/14/22. The rest of the drawings were 9/29/22.
And these are what was in the package you uploaded to Viewpoint?
Yes, yep.
Citizens, this is online for your review.
And so I put together just this presentation board, just overlaying the site plan and the property onto an aerial image of the neighborhood. So as you can see, there's... The project consists of two solar arrays that kind of are divided by a central access road coming up the middle of the property. The fenced-in area that comprises the entire, both arrays, is 18 acres. So the development that we have proposed has gone through several, as I noted earlier, several plan revisions, not only of the drawings, but the calculations.
So I have a question right now. This doesn't seem to match the phased and terraced structure.
Well, this, again, is just a kind of a picture showing the panels of the outlines of the basins.
This does not show the terraced design...
No.
I correct?
It's a concept plan.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, again, just kind of a picture for a presentation.
I did look at this, and that prompted my question, because the terraced design was a very important mitigation design that you guys worked out.
Yeah. That plan you're talking about is the last sheet in the plan set, Sheet 9.
Okay. So you will address it, and I understand what I'm looking at.
Sure. Yep. So the project has been laid out to meet the solar bylaw of maintaining a 50-foot solar setback from all the property lines. That's an undisturbed zone. So the limit of our clearing, limit of work for any of the project basins or the development of the property is all meets those 50-foot solar setbacks, and in some instances exceeds that amount. The access road you see coming in off of Farring Hill Road, as Mr. Shanahan had mentioned, went through some changes, but you can see that as it comes in off of Farring Hill Road, it turns to the northeast to provide less of a visual impact on Farring Hill. As you're driving by, you'll just see the entrance and then the road turning off to the right. From that point, it extends up into the center of the panels to the locations of the BES equipment and other electrical equipment pads that are at the center of the property. And that basically divides the site into the two arrays right there. In addition, there will be a 20-foot access road that will provide access around the entire array. That will be a special construction. It'll be a grassed, vegetated road, but it'll have a gravel base underneath to provide a stable base for vehicles and equipment driving around there. But it won't be gravel. It'll be grassed.
A question. Did the fire department approve that? Will they use that road? We should... You don't have...
They did review the plans in terms of the access roads, and I believe we have gotten that sign off and asked from them.
Okay. So they're okay with not being gravel? Okay.
Yeah.
Just something you don't have to answer today, but we'll...
Sure.
Before we close out, we should make sure they're happy with the roads.
Mm-hmm. At the center of the property also, where the equipment pad is, as Mr. Shanahan had mentioned, there's going to be some sound walls for mitigating the sound emanating from those... The equipment there. We've also shown on Sheet 3 of the project is a table of the zoning requirements, so that you can see in terms of what the setbacks are from the property... From the project to the property lines and how we meet all the aspects of your residential R60 zone and also the solar energy bylaw, section 590.
Can we stop at that point? Is Ken still there, John?
Yes, I'm still here.
Yeah. One area that I was confused on, and you and I went back and forth on the version of the bylaws we're going to apply. In one document, we had a bylaw dated June 12, 2021. I could not find that document. I thought it was the October 2019, but what is the... I thought it was the October 2019, but what is the version of the bylaws we're going to apply? What, Mr. Tabazinski, what version of the bylaws were you referring to?
The October 2019, yeah. That's, and again, that's what we listed on the sheet.
I just want to get clear on what version.
As to use.
Yes, yes, as to use, yes. So could we confirm that before we get to the end? Because in the, in the document, the decision document, the first draft, it had a date of June 12, 2021. So before we get to the end, we should...
We'll clear that up, yeah.
Yeah, clear that up. It's, it's, this application is protected under the zoning bylaws. We just have to get the right date. It's either October 19th, excuse me, October, the Fall Town Meeting of 2019, which is the one I thought it was, but we'll, we'll get the right version of the bylaws. It's, the changes are not significant. Thank you. So Ken, can you help us? We'll just get that confirmed for the record.
Yes.
Okay, just continuing, just a couple of other items regarding the, the development. The, the whole array will be fenced in with a, you know, a seven-foot chain link fence. That fence will have a, a six-inch gap under, at the lower end of it for smaller wildlife passages between the fence and the property, and the project. There will be some screening on the south side of the development, and you can kind of see it on the presentation plan, and some darker images on the bottom of, of each solar array. That's basically going to be a row of arborvitae planted at a staggered spacing along those southern edges, basically to help screen the project. We feel that in some instances, screening probably isn't necessary due to the setbacks to Farring Hill Road and to the other, other residences in the area. But that came up on prior develop, prior planning board meetings, and it was committed to by the applicant to put that screening on those, on the southern side of the arrays. The interconnection of the project is in the front, right in front of the entrance there. There's a detail shown on sheet three of, of how that will be accomplished. As Mr. Shanahan had mentioned, we were able to reduce the number of poles out at the site. I believe right now, the latest design shows three, only three utility poles there, and the rest would be underground. And then leading into the project and every, all the other electrical lines on the project would be, would remain underground. So that's the general layout of the, of the property, of the project. If you look on sheet three, we do list, we've provided a number of distances to, from, from the panels to abutting houses, abutting property lines. You know, there's probably over 20, over 20 dimension lines shown on sheet three that basically give the various dimensions to, to, to the, to closest residences around the prop, around the property. But most of the, most of the setbacks from residences are quite extensive in, in the hundreds of feet, the closest resident being the DeMello residence, and that's at 170 feet, I believe, to the nearest structure out there, so.
Can you point to that on the map there?
Yeah, that's down in this location here. We have about, mentions about 170 feet to those, those structures. It's 85 feet to the property line. In that location, it's 127 feet from the panels to the property line, but that includes an 85-foot natural tree buffer. So that's only just one example, but as, if you need to know a distance to any of the houses across the street on Farring Hill or even onto the west side of the property, they're all dimensioned on the plans on sheet three. So in terms of stormwater, the basic stormwater design was, includes three detention basins, and those are highlighted in light blue on this presentation board. But we did, as with the plans, we did various renditions of the stormwater report and addendums to it to address all the comments from your, your consulting engineer and from, to address comments from Horstley and Witten during their hydro geological study. So that report, there was an original report, and there was three addendums to it. The latest was addendum three, and that was dated September 2, 2022. So that, but there was the original report, addendum one, addendum two, and then addendum three. If you don't have those in your record, we can easily provide those, but I believe you, you should have them, but let us know.
We need to raccossile all the historical artifacts and make sure we get them.
Okay. So basically, the design of the stormwater system with the calculations that went along with it meets the DEP stormwater management standards. That was our, our goal, and to also show that there wasn't no impacts off-site in terms of the amount of runoff leaving the site to the northeast and to the southwest. Basically, as you know, the site kind of splits into two basic watersheds, heading, heading to the northeast and then to the, to the sou, northeast and then the southwest. And so we've looked at the runoff from the site pre-development and post-development, making sure we, that things aren't increased after the development. We made sure runoff is being treated in accordance with the DEP's requirements, and we also made sure we're meeting any recharge requirements from the DEP. And we were attaining that by the use of those, again, three detention basins and a series of swales and infiltration trenches and conveyance stone trenches throughout the site that divert the water to these basins so that they can, the water can be cleansed, allowed to infiltrate in certain areas, and also to settle and be released at a, at a rate less than what's going on, than, than the pre-development conditions. So those reports, again, are all been, been peer reviewed. The systems have been sized for the 100-year storm using the latest, latest storm values from NOAA. In terms of erosion control measures on the site, we're providing a number of riprap aprons, riprap channels, energy dissipators at all the basin outlets. The site is ringed with erosion control measures that are shown on the, the erosion control plan, sheet nine, along with construction details and notes for the contractor to work off of. But in addition to that, part of the initial reviews from the planning board had some very, very concerns about what was happening during construction. So that was addressed by the preparation and including a construction phasing and erosion control plan as sheet nine in the drawing set, and then also a written document that was a construction sequence phasing narrative, and that was, again, dated 10/14/2022. So those two documents going together was our methodology that we put together to address construction impacts and phasing the project so that it was built in, in a way that down, down gradient areas were completed and stabilized first before the, before the upper portions of the site were constructed, so that you wouldn't have a situation where the entire site's just wiped clean and, and left open for a long period of time with this, with this phased construction approach, which unfortunately is going to add some construction costs to the, to the project, but it will, it was what we felt and your peer review engineers felt was, was needed to address any impacts during construction. So that's on sheet nine of your project set. So as terms of my presentation, that's the detail I was going to get into, and I'll open it up for any questions, I guess, you may have at this time or in the future.
Sam? Julie?
Yeah, I just had a question. So you have arborvitae, you have a lot of grasses that looks like are going to be installed. Does the maintenance plan, I know we're bonding the arborvitae, hopefully we don't have a drought like we're having right now. Is there a plan for maintenance of grasses, invasive species, that kind of, which can, invasive species can quickly, as an owner of a number of arborvitae that do not like invasive, invasive species? So what is, would be the plan to make sure that all of this isn't overrun by so many of those invasive species that are in many of our backyards in Wareham?
We can provide, in response to your question, a detailed O and M.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we're expecting you to answer every question tonight.
Tonight, no.
We're going to get a flavor of how we can move forward effectively. Jane?
I think I'm good right now.
Okay. Mike?
So just to be clear, I'm looking, we're kind of a maintenance of, we've seen projects where meadows install, wonderful, three months later, not being maintained, gone, invasive species. We have, I have a question about, are we doing anything underneath the panels, or is this just, are we, are we going to plant grasses under the panels? And again, the answer is maybe in all that you gave us, but if there is, please refer me to...
The answer is yes, and it is included in what's been provided.
So just one, one update. We, we had worked with you to come up with a seeding protocol, and we've, we've gone through a couple of iterations on it, so we may, we may want to work with you on some updates. We've gotten feedback, we've learned some things, so it was a good attempt, but there may be a different mix.
Yeah, Josh had mentioned it to us. We investigated it, and we found the UMass program is not feasible, and I think long since gone by the wayside, but...
Right, but that was some years ago, the, so we need to work with you to come up with a, with a seeding protocol.
I'd also caution you that your consultant told us what we would be using for a seed mix at our site.
Well, and it's a new application, we need to work to get a, a seed mix that's going to work. And I did want to mention, just so it's in the back of your mind, as we think about the, the cover over the site, we did have a local beekeeper who is proximate to this site, who came and spoke passionately.
I was here.
Oh, okay. So I think if, if we can, as we think through our plan for site vegetation, his concern, I don't know that we can address him, I don't, I don't know, but I'm bringing it forward so that it's something that as we try and improve, I don't want to redesign the project, but these are things that sort of go around the basic design, so.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Two weeks ago, I was at a seminar in Richmond, Virginia with the, quote, "bee lady."
So...
Gave a two-hour presentation.
So if, if we could benefit from that, and it can influence how we vegetate...
Sure.
...the site, that would be great, and perhaps that would make one of the local industries, industries. So, for your gizmo raider.
And I, I know that we had discussed the, the planting, the, the seed mix prior, and I was not aware that there were some changes made to it, but that's why I did not really want to rehash...
We need to, we need to evolve it as we go through the design.
But yes, if there are, if there's some evolution that needs to happen, I would agree with that.
I'd also point out that the order of conditions to be issued by the Conservation Commission will require that they approve the seed mix also, so there's double oversight on the issue.
Okay, well, then we should make sure we're not at odds. When you have that order of conditions, can we make sure? I mean, we need to, it's part of the record anyway, but, yes, we won't give you competing requirements, I hope.
Again.
Okay, so bees, seed mix, pollinator mix, all things that we'd like to consider.
The intent with the seed mix was to get a, a broader base. It was, it was pretty much a monoculture originally, as originally submitted, and I think that that doesn't lend itself to a successful...
Diverse habitat.
...establishment of habitat and root structure and all of that, so.
Great, well, we would look forward to hearing your input on that.
And sorry, another question. Again, as an owner of a home that has both a well and a septic system, did you locate well-septic systems and did that, and I'll show my ignorance, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a country lawyer. Did you integrate that knowledge into the planning of stormwater management, all of that? I have a hydrologist son.
So I believe Horstley Witten addressed some of those concerns.
Mm-hmm.
So we need, we need to go back and look at that and see if you're satisfied that...
I will look at that and let you know.
Or have your son give us his input. Okay.
You won't want to hear from me on that one, but yes, okay.
And we did, we did talk about septic, we did talk about wells.
Horstley Witten was very much cognizant of that.
So we need to go back and, that's why I want to make sure we get that brought forward and, and have it visible.
Which, of course, is water, not just, not just stormwater, but water quality with panels, with battery, with wells in the vicinity, with septic systems that can be affected, so.
Great, so we, we have some starting point on that?
Telegraphing some of my questions to come.
Great, and I'm sorry, we have, we have a starting point, and hopefully some of your questions can be answered, but we need to get that onto the record.
Yes.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Buckland, any comments, questions, advice before we, before we invite the public forward?
No?
No, I don't have any comments at this time.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to keep interfering.
Your time was...
I know. Can I, can we all just confirm, this is a site plan review and special permit application?
Yes, that, that has...
Because I noticed in these materials, we talk a lot, it's a lot of discussion about site plan important, and it's also a special permit.
That, you, that was satisfied to your satisfaction?
I did what I was told to do, Ms. Chairman.
Okay.
Good answer.
At least you understand our position, and, and is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Josh, any, any comments or questions or input at this point?
None from me at this time.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, as this is a public hearing, it's 8:30, so we will entertain public comment. Normally, we would end at 10 o'clock and then continue, this is going to be continued. You would expect that, right, Mr. Shanahan, that this is going to be continued? Yes, so we'll, we'll, we'll have to deal with a continuance. So yes, like to, to close by 10 and then continue and continue to allow opportunity for comment and input. Does anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak? Ms. Hayes?
Can I also just say one thing? Sorry. I want, I, I mentioned it to a few of the folks, citizens that were here earlier. I want to thank every one of you who submitted comments, both beginning two years ago, three years ago, four years ago now, and forward, and how helpful and important, helpful it is to the board and important it is to the board relative to this project. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your thoughtful, thorough, insightful comments and documents that you submitted.
comments and documents that you submitted.
Thank you.
Please state your name, address, and spell your name for Patty, please.
Annie Hayes, A-N-N-I-E-H-A-Y-E-S.
Address?
52 Farmers Lane.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, Julie, for bringing in the big picture of the change that we know has taken place in the last three years, and in the last two weeks, actually, as far as the deregulation we can expect for the necessity we know that climate crisis demands. I'd also like to thank you, and Sam, and Mike particularly, for saying no for the various reasons of a former project, you for the.
That's, that's really not relevant to the case.
It has to do exactly with this. It does, it does.
Please focus on this application.
Okay, well, I would say that I appreciate that the cumulative effect in the destruction of Wareham's environment and the intrusion of corporate mentality, which is designed for shareholders, not for the common good, is a very, an good place to be with board members, and also.
Thank you, that, that was to the point.
To move forward. I, I can reframe, Carl, I thought, you know, I'm a little gun-shy about being cut off altogether.
No, no, you're not, I'm just trying to.
No, you did all right, okay.
Trying to focus.
I also want to thank you, as a board, in your review of evidence for including the protection of surface and groundwater quality, the coating of the panels, which, as you know, is a huge concern of mine. And I noticed the panels are not even named here. Jinko is the manufacturer, we know that. But there is no model, there's no reference to anti-reflective coating, hydrophobic coating, and the use of nanoparticle technology, which is enormous. I've just been reading the NIH massive amounts of comments, research about the effect of nanoparticles, microparticle plastics for children and their development, their, their neurology, their ability to learn. It's a huge thing, and I think we haven't even begun to tap that. So, one of the things that I have, I'm, I'm not in great shape, I'm, I probably don't have to explain that, but my nervous system is somewhat battered. But I have my comments here in written form as well.
This is what you submitted?
No.
Oh, this is in addition?
No, no, this is new, this is a new hearing.
No, no, what you submitted, you submitted some stuff last week.
Right.
Is that what this is?
But this is, this is more information, because.
Then you need to.
COP29 just finished up.
So, can you, as you identify it, so we can get it introduced?
I, oh, I don't know if I can, I'm going to give it to you.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
COP25, the Global Climate Conference in, where was it, Bahrain? I'm not sure.
Asher Bajan.
Just finished, Baku?
Asher Bajan.
Oh, okay. Just finished, and some called it the COP OUT Conference. It's, it's devastating, and one quote I'd like to read is, there was, there was an absence of truthfulness.
Can you bring that, how it applies to this application?
Because we are facing tipping points that are massive, and they affect a project like this. One of the very localized comments is, in listening to these fellows talk about the work that's been put into this, what a lot of work to destroy an upland forest watershed in the heart of an extremely critical animal corridor and source of water 360 directions. Part of this project actually diverts water from the east, the western side, which feeds the Sipican River, highly polluted right now, if you look at the map downstairs, and sends it over to the side of the Wee Wee Antic, highly polluted. And there is no mention, which is one of the main points, of what is washing off these panels. So, are we adding more pollutants? No mention of the many, many, many private wells that some of these people here have that are the recipients of whatever washes off these panels. No mention of that is the first tier of, of inhabitants. I went around and went to the water district to find out how many people had private, I mean, public water, counted all the houses, and subtracted to find out how many people had wells, and then confirmed with many of them. When this was brought up under Mr. Swenson and Neil Price, the hydrogeologist asked, first question, any private wells? And he said, no. There was no research about the private wells, no counting, no accommodating or understanding of their depths, and some of them are, are older houses, and they didn't drill down that far. Folks back here have a deeper well that taps the aquifer in a different place, but a lot of them are shallow. There is no account of who has private wells and what's going to be impacted. And I think that's something, I wish I had some water, that is, is grossly deficient.
Thank you, that, that's, that's a good example of focused to this, to this application. It's helped, it's helped, so thank you.
But I'll tell you, the larger picture is going to focus us enormously, and it needs to be discussed. Maybe it has to be discussed in an open conversation, back and forth, you know, that isn't a, a meeting like this. One of the new pieces of information that has to do with all of this is that, for the first time in human history, humanity, quote, "Humanity has thrown the global water cycle off balance, fueling a growing water disaster that will wreak havoc on economies, food production, and lives," according to a landmark new report. The, the water cycle that you learn about in third grade, right? And why? Well, we know that the lungs of the planet, the Amazon, being cut, are disappearing. What about the localized? And this water cycle has local, regional effect. It's not just the Amazon, it happens everywhere. So, we also are getting storms that Noah is referencing with Helene, the hurricane, that look like they are fueling precipitation and thus flooding between 15 and 25 percent as we stop, or as we refuse to stop the use of fossil fuels. And as, we're not making headway with, with.
You're coming up on 10 minutes, so can you, you have an ask?
Yeah, I will, it's all in here.
You have an ask?
It's all in here. But we are not making progress. We went from 84 percent of, of how far we had to go down to 80 percent. I think those facts are correct. And it's because by 2040, we're supposed to have 60 percent more energy. Where is the word conservation? Where is the hammering on people in policy at the select board level, at the conservation level, at all levels of boards, that we need to conserve? We need to protect these systems, not destroy them and then do 60 percent more by 2040? It's an insane formula, and as Mike has said, it's the formula of the developers and the corporations. RWE is competing for first place in the last hundred years, being the greatest polluter in the EU. They have done so much harm to health, safety, and welfare.
Can you substantiate that allegation?
I have all of this, okay?
Please, don't, don't make allegations you can't substantiate.
I am not, I have, I don't do that, Carl.
No, no, I'm asking you to substantiate it, so.
It's all in this, this stuff I'll hand in.
Is it, is it, can we find it? Is it organized? You're going to submit that?
I have numbered pages, Carl.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. So, do you have an ask? I mean, I'm inferring an ask.
I have an ask, I'd like to know the make, I mean, I know the make, the model of the Jinko panels. I'd like to know what the AR coatings, they say AR as if they don't even want to tell you what's anti-reflective coating, AR coating and hydrophobic coating, and the nanotechnology. Jinko was the first to use nanotechnology, 2010. They've been doing it a long time.
Great.
And they do not have bill of materials. That's what Neil Price said we needed. Before construction, you get the bill of materials from an independent agent, so you know the chemistry of these panels. Mr. Shanahan said, oh, we can't do that because they come in batches. What a feeble excuse.
Thank you, so.
What do I want you to do? Oh, for the whole thing? I want you not to do, I want, I want you to refuse to permit this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Kathy? And again, Mr. Shanahan, much of, these citizens have submitted stuff for you to be able to see on the web, so.
Look, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Kathy Papalardo, Fearing Hill Road, also president of the Wareham Land Trust.
Can you spell your name, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Following up, not reiterating everything I sent in, but following up. The Horsey Witten Report, one of the very first things at the beginning worth reading, is, will, it states, the Horsey Witten Report is not a formal regulatory review, it only looked at two factors, groundwater and stormwater quantity, not quality, and they did not study the impacts to habitat nor non-hydro impacts to neighbors. As you get through that report, you will see that their focus is on the west side and the northeast corner. Those of us who live on the east side were ignored. There are residents there. For a while, it was all referred to as vacant land. It is not vacant land. There's also conservation land there that is protected by a conservation restriction with the state of Massachusetts. Our duty of the land trust is to protect the conservation values of that land. So, if that land gets flooded because of this, that affects the conservation values of that land. If the habitat is affected because of the project next door, that affects the conservation value of that land. Any damage done to that land because of this project is going to be a problem. So, that's our concern in that hat. It's legally protected. We've been monitoring that land since the town, since before the town acquired it, by walking the boundaries every year and making sure there's no encroachments. We report if there's anything. Josh gets the reports from the land trust every year with all the documentation of the property, and if there's been changes there, if somebody set up a hunting stand, none of that's allowed. So, we do watch that property. Our concern was with the noise coming. Is the noise going to affect that property? Is there sightlines? Are we going to see solar panels? That affects conservation value. That poor Mr. DeMello, I don't know what his property values are going to do because of this project, but that's his issue. I have a question. The battery specifics, you really need the battery specifics. That project is less than half its original megawatts. It was originally four, now it's, Mr. Shanahan said 1.87. Have the batteries changed, or are they going to stay the same? The specifics of the batteries, those capacity of the battery is very important to find out. And in regards to managing the invasives, do not allow herbicides to be used there to take care of the invasives, and don't allow pesticides. Those of us around there, we are on private wells. Groundwater issues, Mr. Price at his report said he didn't, he couldn't say there was zero, and I watched that tape twice, he could not say the word zero, and he was not sure how it would affect older septic systems. There may be a problem. All of us on the hill are on septic, there is no sewer up there. That's a big consideration for all of us. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Do you have an ask?
Excuse me?
Do you have an ask?
I would ask you to deny this project for the health, safety, and welfare of those of us who are living there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please? Okay, thank you. Just keep me appraised a bit. Are we going to tandem here?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could introduce yourselves.
Sure.
Address, spell your names, please.
Sure. I'm Millie Burrows, and I live at 18 Shangri-La Boulevard.
And I'm Judy Burnett, B-U-R-N-E-T-T, and I live at 68 Avenue A in Wareham.
So, I want to begin first by saying thank you for all the work you put into it, because I know what work I put into this doesn't even hold a candle to what you do, and it was incredibly frustrating. One of the frustrations was I zipped my files. I have two files that I submitted, one that I'm presenting and one that Judy is presenting. I got one back, rejected, I sent it to three emails, Josh's, Sonya's, and the planning board's Gmail. I know Judy received it and was able to open the zip. It is not uploaded on the site. I called the office, I was, or I, I'm sorry, I emailed the office when I got the rejection, and I was told to try an alternate address, which was for Josh. I tried that, I got no rejection back, but I also couldn't get confirmation. And when I tried to call the office, it was a big loop in, in the automated system, so the best I could do was leave a message.
Okay, so I encourage you to continue if, if you have paper copies.
I have the hard copies of both that I will give you, yes.
Yes, thank you.
And are you able to then upload it as part of the record?
We should be able to scan those and, and upload them.
And upload them, okay.
Carl, can I ask a question? You're not the first, including all of us, who have had challenges. Is there anyone that folks should be calling if they're trying to upload and they need some support? Is there anyone in Matt's group, or, I mean, is there any resource?
I don't, I don't know if Matt takes outside calls.
Yeah.
It really, so, it's the planning of. Ken, do you have any thoughts on how they can get around this? This is a problem.
I think what we can do is maybe do some research on it and see what the problem is and try to address it. I don't have an answer for you right now. I would, I would hope that IT would be the one that would help in this regard.
But generally.
Like I said, I don't know if they take outside calls.
Yeah, I was going to say, generally, we don't refer citizens, I think, to, to the IT department.
Is there like a, you know, a series of screenshots or something, so folks could really help themselves?
Well, this is sounding like there's size restrictions on sending emails.
Yeah.
So, another, I mean, technically, you could break it down into smaller parts.
I suppose the other option is to put it onto a thumb drive and drop it out.
That's another, another option.
If you want to keep it digital.
Yes.
Sounds like you said you used a zip drive, and it's still?
No, no, she zipped the file.
You zipped it.
I zipped the file.
How big, well.
And other people were able to open the compressed file without a problem.
But the town has.
The volume on the town site, yeah, I understand.
So, break it, break it into smaller parts.
Needs to be fixed.
Thumb drive, paper cop, we'll, we'll do what, what we can. We got, we, we are committed to getting your.
Our apologies.
No, I'm not going to apologize. This is a town, this is a town problem.
So, I admire people who can speak off the cuff. I won't be organized or competent if I don't read it, so I'm going to read what I'm submitting. Without all the details about project numbers and everything, because you know what we're here for. So, my ask is that the planning board reject or condition this special permit site plan. I know different things apply to each one for your purview, because it threatens the health, safety, and welfare of Wareham residents. I submit the following documents as evidence of this, and hope the information will be helpful to the planning board in making an informed decision on this project. So, this is the, the first one. It has about a dozen exhibits attached. The first three pertain to. about a dozen exhibits attached. The first three pertain to the, what the finding is in reference to. And I'll go through each of them. The first one, Exhibit A, is the 2021 zoning bylaw for solar generation facilities. And I will say, at first I did it with twenty, with 2019. Then I was advised, that we were advised to use 2021. So I nixed all that. I went to 2021. If it goes back to 2019, the contact, content is in both. It's a different number. It's a different page number, but the content is, is in both of those. So it's two subsections that I'm referring to. Subsection 591 in the 2021 zoning bylaw states, "The purpose of this bylaw is to encourage the use of the solar generation facilities and provide for the construction and operation of ground-mounted solar energy facilities and to provide standards for the placement, design, construction, monitoring, modification, and removal of large ground-mounted solar energy facilities that address public safety, minimize the impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources of the town, and provide adequate financial assurance for decommissioning." Subsection 592.3, number six, I believe in the 2019 one, it is 594.3, number six. Twenty nineteen has it on page forty-seven. Twenty twenty-one has it on page fifty-two. And it establishes the important role that trees play and specifically states the, quote, "Clearcutting of trees and natural vegetation shall be kept to the minimum necessary," end quote. It goes on, but that's the key phrase. To, this, these are my words. "To allow for the clearcutting required by this project to go forward will be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of residents due to effects on the surrounding watershed and estuaries and the private wells and septic systems of residents living below the hill. It could also jeopardize efforts to reduce nitrogen load in our waterways, as will be detailed below." So the second one that it refers to is the Fearing Hill Hydro Report, done by Horsley and Witten on May twenty twenty-two. It indicates that there is potential impact of stormwater runoff on the homes near the site in area that experiences high groundwater levels. The hydrology report also confirms that the area surrounding the site experiences high groundwater levels. And it states that any potential increase in water table elevation, called mounding, could impact the performance of nearby septic systems and their compliance with Title V regulations. And then the third one is the report. It was the final MASTA EP Wareham River Estuary System. And I know this isn't Wareham River, but I'll draw the line in a minute. So Exhibit C is this report, and it noted degradation from nutrient enrichment. That was on page nine. It set the target total maximum daily load, or TMDL, for nitrogen values of the estuary system, as well as an implementation plan mandating that nitrogen load be reduced. This is what Wareham is required to act on. So here are the supporting evidences. It's Exhibit D through L. D. Data presented in Massachusetts Climate Change Projections MVP Training Workshops, and we use the MVP program, estimate that total annual precipitation will increase by two to thirteen percent and winter precipitation will increase by up to twenty-one percent. It's more conservative than other estimates. Exhibit E has research done, and I've included just the pertinent pages. My link that you won't have yet has the full article.
Please continue to try and get it, but continue. Thank you.
Research done by Dartmouth University set forth an extreme precipitation in the northeast to increase by fifty-two percent by 2099. That's a bit down the road, but that's an increase of staggering amount. It indicates that, quote, "Winter and spring contribute most to the projected fifty-two percent increase in extreme precipitation in the north, in the region by 2020, 2099, with increases of both frequency and rain amounts of one hundred and nine percent and eighty-nine percent respectively." Exhibit F is the article, "The Storms and Floods: Massachusetts Wildlife Climate Action Tool," which outlines predicted increases in frequency of precipitation events. It predicts that in our area, one hundred-year coastal events such as hurricanes and nor'easters will occur every ten to twenty-one years by 2050 and every one to two years by 2100. And we know that that's not a guarantee, that we could have two years in a row with hundred-year storms. So these are my words, not the exhibit. "The hydrology report dismisses the impact of larger one hundred-year storms due to their own frequency and claims that the amount of rainfall they contribute is therefore not significant. This conflicts with other predictions of precipitation events." Exhibit G, Wareham Week summed it up. It's the, the state report on setting limits for nitrogen, noting that the DEP's recommendation is for us to reduce the river's total maximum daily load of nitrogen between roughly thirty-five percent and fifty-five percent, which varies for different parts of the river. Exhibit H, "A 2022 Buzzards Bay Coalition Map, the Integrated List 2022 Impaired Waters' Nutrients Bacteria Document," shows that the Wee Wee Antic has nutrient and bacteria impairments. The Wee Wee Antic is situated near Fearing Hill, along with the Sipican River, and has been one of the most significantly impaired rivers in Buzzards Bay watershed. These are my words. "We have a state mandate and a responsibility to reduce the nitrogen content in our waterways. Fearing Hill is not far from the Wee Wee Antic watershed and runoff eventually makes its way into estuaries and aquifers. Do we want to risk raising the nitrogen levels higher than they are? Septic systems are a primary source of nitrogen. When they are overcome with inundation, nitrogen and other contaminants will flow downstream. To set the stage for increased nitrogen runoff caused by the consequences of clearcutting can be avoided by rejecting this project and, and the risk of jeopardizing health, safety, and welfare." Exhibit I, "Research shows that deforestation, quote, 'continues to release, contributes to releasing huge amounts of nitrates into the water course in the following months,' as described by Jerome Ogier in 'The Effect of Clearcutting on the Environment,' done by Polytechnic Institute, Insights, I'm sorry. The group notes, 'Stream flow increases and large quantities of sediment, up to seven hundred percent, are washed into the water courses, along with nitrates and soil cations such as calcium, potassium, and aluminum, sometimes degrading water quality.'" That's on page three to five of that article. "Trees take up nitrogen compounds from the soil. A shortage of trees stops this process, and it is washed into the watershed." Exhibit J, "As noted in the article, 'How Does Forest Harvesting Affect Nitrogen in Streams,' by the State University of New York College of Environmental Science and Forestry, deforestation raises the temperature of the soil and boosts the activity of soil microbes, which elevates the production of ammonium and nitrate." Exhibit K, "The research done in Frontiers/Effective Deforestation on Dissolved Organic Carbon and Nitrate in Catchment Stream Water, revealed by Wavelet Analysis," which was their process of doing that, "reveals that both dissolved organic carbon, or DOC, and nitrate are highly soluble, and they can readily be transported from soils into adjacent water bodies," end quote. "The wavelet analysis they conducted focuses on DOC levels, noted that there was an immediate increase in in-stream DOC concentrations, followed by an increase in nitrate about a year later. The levels after that diverge, but the changes influence various environmental processes and nutrient dynamics. They suggest, in this research document, that further exploration is needed to enhance understanding of the effect of anthropogenic disturbance." The last exhibit, L, is called in, it's called Water Protecting, it's, sorry, I'm tired. It's Water Protecting the Source, and that was issued by the Trust for Public Land and the American Water Works Association. It discusses, quote, "Non-point sources of pollution," end quote, which refers to runoff and leachate from septic systems, for example. It describes how ground and surface water pollution and chemistry can impact the quality of water in shallow aquifers and wells. It also notes that as water flows more quickly through sandy soils, which we have in Wareham, fewer contaminants are removed.
You're, you're, you're gonna bring it?
I am right at the end.
Okay, great.
This raises additional concern, not addressed in this finding of fact, but Annie has spoken eloquently to that, and that's about the substances on the panels. "I urge you to reject and/or condition the Fearing Hill Special Permit/Site Plan. The reasons are that we will experience increased precipitation in the future. The inundations will have detrimental effects on nearby wetlands and estuaries, septic systems, and private wells. We may be at risk due to increased levels of nitrogen and other pollutants that infiltrate our waterways and drinking water. We already have excessive levels of nitrogen in our waterways. All of this will be exacerbated by clearcutting acres of forest. The result endangers our health, safety, and welfare on many levels. If the planning board needs more information in regards to implications on water quality, which was not fully addressed in the hydrology report, then it should be thoroughly evaluated by a water quality expert."
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening. I know that was long.
Oh, we were well organized. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make it, try to make it a little bit shorter.
Name, spell your name.
Judy Burnett, B U R N E T T, sixty-eight Avenue A in Wareham. There's, I'm asking the planning board to condition this special permit or site plan or reject it based on the health, safety, and welfare of the Wareham residents, as well as the birds, the ground, all the other environmental things we want to protect. And so there's like twenty exhibits that are attached to this specific piece that Millie tried to send in. One of them, of course, is the zoning bylaws of the town.
This is different, these are different.
This is different than hers.
This one was related to precipitation projections and nitrogen. This one is related to the biodiversity concerns.
You know, the birds, animals, native species, protected species, anything from like owls, migrating birds, all of that kind of information that we're trying to protect worldwide. So the zoning bylaws, the section we were looking at specifically was Section 591 and Section Subs, or Subsection 591, Subsection 592.3, which is, you know, addressing ground-mounted solar energy facilities and clearcutting of trees. I'm not gonna read the whole section. I'm sure you all know it. And specifically to say that solar panels are great. We all want the solar energy. But at the same time, clearcutting of the trees and the forest just eliminates a lot of other positive things that we want for our health and safety and the welfare of our residents and of all the other creatures that we live with in the, on this earth. So the idea of clearcutting and planting grass underneath the solar panels or, there, there seems to be that maybe there's another way to do it so that we kind of try to keep the natural and historic resources that the town of Wareham brings and that we all kind of moved here to be with, you know, the, just not have solar panels everywhere or, or parking lots everywhere. We just want to keep the natural resources that the town has that makes people want to move here. So that's one part of the exhibits that there. And the other one is the Resilient Mass Plan, 2023 Mass State Hazardous Migration Mitigation and Climate Adaption Plan, Chapter Seven, which goes into the health and safety of us living and trying to build a natural environment. And that is the values that we and the planning board and zoning boards and all of our volunteers here in town are trying to do. And then the biodiversity goals for the Commonwealth, part of our local government. The planning board is your key decision-making role and responsibility in sustaining, sustaining biodiversity and our health and well-being of us as residents and as, you know, other, other parts of the conservation habits. Then there's the Senate Bill, which is Exhibit S on the stuff that has been submitted, and how the state has to take a closer look at how to protect the residents and the environment while working on expanding clean energy, protecting the natural resources and minimizing the, the impact of multiple ground-mounted solar panels, some that are already near the Hill, Fearing Hill site. And I think it needs to be a priority for not just us in Wareham, but in the state, that we look at how it affects all of it. If you have one over, one here and another one over here and another one here, how do the, how do the, you know, how's it a turtle or a bird or how do they get from one area to another safely? And if you have stuff that is divided by highway, road, solar panels, which tend to heat up, I think they heat up more so in, in the environment around them. So if a bird is flying through this area, I haven't seen it. I don't want to see it. But do they really get zapped and killed? I don't, I don't know. But it's, it's one of those things that I think we have to look at. The Mass Endangered Species Act, again, stating that we want to protect these species and their habitats. And clearcutting of the Fearing Hill site will result in total destruction of critical flora and fauna and fauna. So looking at something that might be less destructive would certainly help our rare species that we have on that site, which I think we do have Ware species. I think there's that turtle that people are saying that they've seen. So again, maybe having somebody go and take a look. I think there's a picture that I saw that someone said they had on the budding property.
That's in the packet.
The budding property. It's in this packet, yeah.
That one, yeah.
It's in this one, yeah. So I'm trying to keep the clean air, stable climate, adapting water, sanitation, hygiene, protecting us from chemicals. It's all within your overview of what you're doing all the time anyway. But specifically now with this, so many acres of deforestation in Massachusetts, I think it was sixty percent of over five hundred ground-mounted solar panels covering eight thousand acres, sixty percent of all of that was deforestation. And I know there's other, other ways of looking at this where they're putting it on top of parking lots, so the cars are going underneath. And, and nothing against Mr. Shanahan. I think he did a great job in his presentation in trying to make sure that things are covered. But I think you have to look at a bigger picture. Where are we gonna be in five years? And that's what you're all there to do. Making it very short here.
Okay, yeah.
Wrinding it all up.
Don't rush. You're gonna submit all this, so just.
We're submitting it, right.
So just, what is it you want to get from what you're?
I want you, I want you to kind of look at the bigger picture for not just the residents, but all the other species that we live with, making sure that we're protecting and, and not just trying to go one route, straight through and, you know, how does it all connect? And when I look at the aerial view of Wareham, you have all these little pockets of solar panel over here, solar panel over here, solar. I just think somehow it has to look down the road five or ten or twenty years and see where we're gonna be and what will your decision, how your decision will impact not just us, but everybody else in, in the world.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Can I just highlight one, one thing?
Okay, yeah.
In, in this packet that I'm gonna give you, there are some maps that show the property like Mr. Shanahan's map does. And it also, there's a map that shows the areas that have been designated as Habitat for Endangered, Critical, Special Concerned Species. You can see the arbitrary straightness of the line. You can see the arbitrary straightness of the line where that is contained. And the reason I really believe that it does not extend over to Fearing Hill, and the reason that Mr. Shanahan got confirmation from his source that there were no endangered species, although they're taking precautions for the turtle, is that no one, no authorized expert has walked that property. And so what they go by are the maps that they have existing of the properties they have examined. This one has not been examined. At the very least, there needs to be an wildlife expert from the Heritage Foundation come and certify it and see what's there. It's not just the turtle. A resident had seen a spotted marble salamander, which is on the endangered species list. It hasn't been seen or noted by the organization since 1999, and they clearly state, and that documents in this packet too, that just because it was a few years back, that doesn't mean it still doesn't exist. And there are snakes, there are many other species also in this packet listed. You get the picture.
Could you do me a favor? You're going to try and email. Would you initial and date the paper copy you're going to hand to Josh so we have, can you do, you're going to give Josh a...
The finding has, the finding itself or all, each of the exhibits?
Just one, just one, just so that the package that Josh...
It's done.
Okay, so you're going to give Josh a paper copy, we're going to try and get the paper copy uploaded.
I don't think Josh was here when they were talking about the fact that they couldn't...
They can't, they can't get emails to you, they can't get...
It was, yours was rejected. I was given your other Gmail account and I didn't hear back, but it's not up on the site.
Okay, so just give them paper copies. If we can't, if we can't get the electronic ones, can we scan and get these posted, please?
Okay.
But I just wanted you to initial so we know who it came from.
It's a full signature.
Great, oh, that's fine. No, no, that's fine.
11/19/24.
Great, great. Now we have, we have a package.
Thank you for listening.
And dated.
And dated, that's exactly what we needed, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And as you said, this format will help us organize through the process. When we get to the end, what are we referring to?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just need to add numbers, I forgot it on one of these, the page numbers. So let me do that and then I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, guys, it's quarter after nine. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Get one online.
Oh, I won't forget the guy online.
You have two now, Nick.
Huh? Now two?
I think it may be Sherry online.
Hi. Name is Josh Uccio. Last name is spelled P like Paul, U-C-C-I-O. I am a homeowner at 3 Old Fearing Hill Road. My house actually shows up on their site plans. And I basically just want to emphasize everything that's been said and just express our concerns as homeowners and residents in the area. I think that we are at a very critical stage, right? In 10 years from now, if this project gets developed, right? And if there is a pollution event that happens, we would want to go back in history and say, okay, no one expected this, right? Or did we? Did we think of these things? Did we look into certain things? Did we take steps and measures to prevent something catastrophic that would affect the area, the neighborhood, the homes, the people there, the children? I have young children there. My drinking water well shows up on their plans. It would be affected by any pollution runoff, either from a fire, batteries, coatings, large-scale use of pesticides across 18 acres of land. You know, we are downstream, so to speak. The water is going to flow down, and that is a concern to us because people that have actually just recently moved to Wareham to get out of the city, to get to places where we don't have treated drinking water. We don't need that, right? We have clean water wells, you know, that it's filtered naturally through the earth, and we're thankful for that, and we just highly value that. And so I guess what my asks are, is that, you know, obviously you're taking into consideration all of these things, but specifically to eliminate the battery storage, that is a huge concern. The developer expressed at the beginning of his statements that this project is not going to put a burden on the fire department. I disagree with that. You've mentioned a catastrophic event. You know, batteries, these batteries, if they're lithium ion, whatever the makeup of those batteries, there have been events that have happened in other parts of the country and even in Massachusetts where these batteries have what they call a runoff event where it is unstoppable, right? So we talked about how the fire department has to make a decision as to whether or not to just let these things continue to burn, right? Or they have to use special fire retardants to put these fires out. And no one's talked about what type of chemicals and, you know, whether or not that there would be PFAS in that fire retardant that would be used to, you know, stop a massive fire from growing, right? Because water is not going to put out a fire started by one of these batteries. And if there's multiple batteries, that fire can spread very, very quickly. So yes, I think that that would put a massive burden on the Wareham Fire Department, without a doubt. Not alone, you know, let alone the pollution that would be, could result from that. I think Massachusetts alone has numerous superfund sites spread out all over the place. Now, if those projects, right, had gone to planning board, no one thought in 10 years this is going to be a superfund site, that the water was going to be undrinkable, right? So you guys have an extreme responsibility here, and I know that you recognize that, and I respect you for that. And I don't envy this decision that you have to make, but I would just, you know, for the sake of, yes, not only the animals, so to speak, or the trees and things like that, but for the children, for the elderly people, you know, that live in those areas, for working-class people like myself. You know, we came to Wareham to build a better life for ourselves. You know, if you, I mean, I don't know if New Bedford can be considered a superfund site, just the entire city is a superfund site, but, I mean, there are numerous, numerous superfund sites in that city. It's unbelievable. So I would also ask that you mandate a bond, you know, that they would put money where their mouth is in relationship to the quality of the drinking water. If it is at all impacted by pollution, whether it's from those coatings, mandate also no use of pesticides. I have bees as well, you know. It's important to me. You know, I am glad that they're concerned about planting, you know, plants and flowers that would aid that. That's great. Well, let's go a step further and not use things that, pesticides, large scale, that in water runoff would affect things like our garden, our drinking water, you know, simple things like that, right? Health things, the health, welfare, and safety of our family and our neighbors as well. So, you know, those are the main concerns, I think, for us. The batteries, storage, the coatings, continue to look into those. Any use of things that could pause, you know, pollution threat to our water supply, our drinking water, those are the important things to us.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't, I don't see anyone.
Right here.
Oh. I know, we've got, I'm not forgetting the people online.
Just wanted to let them know that you do.
We do.
I reminded you a minute ago.
Hey, Eric.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Eric.
And thank you for all the work you do.
Name, spelling.
Eric Lintala, E-R-I-C-L-I-N-T-A-L-A, 15 Squirrel Island Road in Wareham. Proposed findings of fact referencing zoning bylaws of 2019 town of Wareham. I believe the enclosed detailed information taken from the public records 2021-21, 1222, citizens' comments on this project will help to inform the planning board to render a decision not in favor of this project. The letter I submitted to the planning board dated July 24, 2021 specifically addresses several issues in the zoning bylaws of 2019 that pertain to this project. That'd be, this is on Town Site 2121, Fearing Hill Road withdrawn, date 2021, 7/26, amended resident comment, Lintala. Page two of my letter, item 593.4, application for site plan review, sentences 1 through 15, quote, "A stormwater management plan details the existing environmental and hydrological conditions of the site for the protection of existing and, I'm sorry, for the protection of water quality and protection from flooding," end quote. "Under present-day rainy, normal rainy day conditions, basements flood, backyards become swamps, septic systems become vulnerable, private wells become a concern. These problems have been observed firsthand by residents living on Fearing Hill Road across from the proposed solar project. Some of those stories are as follows." And these are noted, they're in the public record, they are on the sites, they are all referenced to the town site and the person doing it and the date. What's important is, these are the citizens, this is...
You submitted this by email.
Yes, this is all, this is all in all of this.
Thank you, yes.
I'm focusing on the citizens on Fearing Hill Road because it's what you've got planned and what has been done is of concern. This citizen, "I'm writing in hopes to bring attention to my concerns about the solar project being proposed on Fearing Hill Road in West Wareham. I have lived on Fearing Hill for 43 yards, it is, 43 years. It is a beautiful residential neighborhood. I have several concerns with this project. One concern is the removing of hundreds of trees and the impact it is going to have on the groundwater. Currently, I have a sump pump that runs all the time. On an average year, if the electricity is to go out any month of the year, I have about 30 to 45 minutes to get my sump pump back up and running before I have to have water in the cellar. For 43 years, I've watched my father replace a sump pump every three to four years because they let go due to so much usage. Removing trees directly across the street from me is going to have a tremendous impact on the groundwater on my property and my neighbors. I know I am not the only one who has this happen on Fearing Hill Road. My neighbor just had to replace her sump pump about six months ago. Right now, the trees suck up the water and the roots slow the water down in the ground. Without that, I foresee a catastrophic event in our basements with water." Another resident, this again, this is on public record on the site, and it's stated, "The recent solar field built behind our property has given rise to an increase in flooding in the area, a noticeable increase in biting insects corresponding with this. We have concern that additional clearing of forest lands will exasperate this problem. Last year was the first we have ever had to spray for mosquitoes on our property after eight years without an issue. The ecosystem has become unbalanced with one project in the area already." They're referring to the solar field that's already just adjacent behind their properties, some Squirrel Island Road property, a solar project there that abuts them on the back end, and this project is being proposed on the front end. So we've got water problems already happening there. They're experiencing that, and they're afraid of what's going to come if this project goes through. Further forested lands act as a natural purifier for drinking water. Many in this area, including our family, rely on wells for our drinking supply. We have concerns about our health of our children with possible increases in pollutants reaching our drinking water." Another resident commenting on some of the aspects that have been mentioned at certain meetings. "Mr. Joe Shanahan, project manager at the Conservation Commission meeting on July 20, 2022, stated several times that this project would have zero increase in rate of runoff of groundwater, zero increase in volume of groundwater runoff, and insignificant effect in groundwater mounding as a result of the project. On WC TV recording of the planning board meeting on July 7, Mr. Price never said zero effect. He did say the risk is something above zero. Mr. Price stated that change is unlikely to be significant. The Horst Witten study was based on the first design of the project, and he believes the second design should improve things. But Mr. Price clearly stated that the risk is something above zero. Mr. Price also went on to say that the rise in groundwater could be 3/4 of an inch, but not nothing. Mr. Price said older septic systems may have issues with the rise in groundwater. There are homes and septic systems of assorted ages that may be affected. Being forced to replace a septic system as a result of this project would be an unfair Mr. Shanahan gave a great intro as to his company, what it represents, how large they are, how many, how professional they are, how extensive they are, and how much experience that they have. Page three of my letter, item 593.5, the bylaws. "A description of the solar energy facility and the technical, economic, and other reasons for the proposed location and design shall be prepared and signed by a registered professional engineer," end quote. "In reference to location and design prepared by a registered professional engineer, it brings into question whether there was any thought or concern as to the other existing solar field located off Squirrel Island Road and directly behind the residence of Fearing Hill Road. I would think that having two solar fields in such close proximity should have been of some concern and question in the early planning stage. This brings in the issue of cumulative impact. One resident on Fearing Hill Road brought up this question at the planning board meeting on June 28, 2021, stating that they will now be sandwiched between two solar fields. That fact alone creates a most undesirable living situation." Page four of my letter, design standards, item 594.2, quote, "On site solar facilities shall meet the following standards. Number five, not permit the equipment to create excessive noise to abutters by installing inverters as far from abutting structures as feasible. Number seven, setbacks shall provide for adequate screening of noise and glare from abutting uses and structures. Techniques such as dense, natural vegetated plantings, earth and berms, or increased setbacks will be required depending upon specific conditions," end quote. "We are told all necessary means will be employed to curtail any nuisance sound by installing inverters. At the planning board meeting on June 28, 2021, a resident on Fearing Hill Road complained of the noise coming from the Squirrel Island Road solar field, which is directly behind her property." Again, this is on the record. Oh, and she quotes, "The environment will suffer by, will suffer. My property value will decrease, but mostly, and most importantly, my quality of life will be substandard due to my last concern, the noise that these panels make. We already have them behind our house on Squirrel Island Road, and the constant humming that goes on all night is a nuisance. Now the town is considering to OK 7,300 panels, maybe that's less now, to be directly across the street from my house. This is, this to me is saying, I can't leave the windows open in my house and enjoy the fresh air because the noise is constant and annoying. Who wants to live like that? The solar field is also directly behind my property at 15 Squirrel Island Road. I was completely surprised to discover that for several years, what I always thought was a strange, intense low humming coming from my neighbor's generator on the other side..." side of the solar field was actually the equipment from the solar field itself. Sound is a factor. A well-researched document on Ferring Hill Solar Detailed Massachusetts Guidelines and Standards on Solar Noise Levels was submitted to the planning board by Ms. Tricia Wirth on 8/16/21. The document points out several discrepancies on Ferring Hill Road." Something of a thought, we're talking about the batteries and inverters and noise suppression. This is going to be up on a hill. All the trees will be cut down. Anything coming off the top of that hill is going to reverberate down and around. There's no trees really to buffer it, not much anyhow. Thank you. Oh, there will be more to come, by the way.
Did you have an ask of us, Eric?
Pardon?
An ask?
I did in the beginning.
Oh.
To please deny this project.
Oh, thank you. Okay, 9:30, okay. All right, let's, let's do the two online. Is there anyone else in the audience? Okay, let's do the two or three or five online.
It's me. Let's see, how do we switch to? Can do our video?
Yeah.
It's trying. Hi, can you hear us?
Yeah, we can't see you, but you're in the dark, but-
Okay, trying to see how to get the video going.
It's okay, I guess if we can hear you. Just state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Okay, although the picture is Sherry Quirk. The speaker at the moment is Norma Scoggin. Sherry is also here, but I think I'm going to address you if that's okay.
Can you spell your name, please?
I can. My, my name is Norma, N-O-R-M-A, Scoggin, S-C-O-G-I-N.
And, and Ms. Quirk? Is she going to speak or she's just going to smile at us?
I'll speak. My name is Sherry, S-E-R-R-Y, T-U-Y-R-K.
Thank you. Ms. Scoggin's?
All right. First of all, I'd like to say that although you probably all know who we are and know that we have held various roles for the town, we are both speaking today in our private capacity as citizens, as taxpayers, as former energy lawyers and people who care about this town very, very much. Although neither of us is licensed to practice law in Massachusetts, I needed to say that. I don't, I'm not going to read what we already submitted. I hope you all got a copy of that. We did our best to get it to everybody, but I do want to touch on a few points that I think gets really important for you to keep in mind. First of all, thank you very much for giving everyone an opportunity to speak here. I think that previous speakers have raised some very important points and have gone into some things in more detail than I will. The first thing I want to say is that clearly this project is hugely lucrative for this developer. To have put as much money into it as they have so far, they must be expecting to make quite a lot off of this. Unfortunately, I think it is a net detriment to the town of Wareham. While we may collect a little bit in the way of some tax revenue, as you've heard, there are many, many downsides to this project for the town. I think what we're hitting up against here are some competing state policies. One of them obviously is addressing climate change, something that Massachusetts seems to take way more seriously than an awful lot of the country. And I think it's important that we do that, however, not at the cost of protecting our natural environment and not at the cost of protecting our environmental justice communities, which are important in this town. And to that end, if you have the materials that we provided, I'll just refer you to page 10 regarding environmental justice communities. That question came up a little while ago and I know that may be confusing and it may be something that a lot of people have not heard of before or not thought about before. But the Healy administration has stated a commitment to securing clean air and water for every resident and ensuring the benefits of our clean energy transition are distributed in an equitable way. And it's that really, that last phrase there, "distributed in an equitable way," that I think is important for the town of Wareham. We attached an exhibit to what we filed, Exhibit 5, and it is a map that shows round circles of where the current solar fields are and other coloring, brown and green coloring of where our environmental justice communities are. And environmental justice communities are defined as low-income, racial and ethnic minorities, indigenous and tribal communities, and English isolated populations. That obviously is a big part of who our town is. We are a very diverse town economically and racially and ethnically. And I think that is why some things have happened here, one of which is many, many of these projects have appeared at our doorstep. And because we needed the tax revenue, I think our town leadership has felt like that might be a good thing to do, to just go ahead and let these developers do what they are asking to do. But I think we have really hit our limit at this point. And I, I would also add that Mr. Shanahan said earlier that there is somehow cost savings in energy for our town and I don't, as a former energy lawyer, I defended rate-making decisions in Texas. I don't really know how that math works because in general, green energy costs the ratepayers more than traditional energy does. And in any event, any savings is likely to be extremely minimal if it exists at all. But I would like to see the justification for that. Several other people have already addressed the issue of battery storage. I'm not going to go into that, but we do refer to that in our filing and I think that is an extremely important consideration when you're talking about health, safety, and welfare. And in closing, I want to say, our natural beauty is our town's greatest asset. I think everyone pretty much agrees on that. Protecting it is a legitimate concern of the citizens and it's a matter properly considered by the planning board. Your focus really needs to be on protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Wareham and looking at the cumulative effects of the many projects that already exist, of the many acres of trees that have already been cut, of the, the natural life that has been disrupted as a result of that, is something that you have to consider and where you should draw the line. I would ask that you look at our filing for further information, in particular for sites to authority, on what it is that you can and should do in these kinds of situations. And our ask is that you recognize that Wareham has done more than its fair share when it comes to addressing climate change for this state and this should be denied.
Is that, are you done? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. John, anywhere else? Hello? Mr. Cosgrove?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, my name is Barry Cosgrove, C-O-S-G-R-O-V-E. My address is Blackmore Pond Circle and I speak on behalf of the Blackmore Pond Homeowners Association. And we begin by thanking this board sincerely for your service to our town and thanks too to the applicant doing a good job trying to repeat some of the, or summarize some of the history here. We ask that you reject this project, three very quick points. The first is jurisdiction. It's very interesting tonight when you asked the applicant, "Do you agree that this body has special permit authority as well as site plan review authority?" And the answer was, "I give what I was told." It seems to me to be patently unfair to all of you working these hours and the time it's going to take you to review this for the 10th round, if this applicant is just going to sue you later on saying you have no jurisdiction, I would urge you to consider asking the applicant yes or no. Do you agree to our jurisdiction and do you agree you're not going to appeal our jurisdiction? Because if they're not, I don't think you should waste any more time with this project. The second point I'd make is on the batteries. And it's in the papers, but it's really worth considering. You might think about asking the applicant, "Would you get on an airplane if 55% of all airplane crashes were for causes that no one could ever figure out? Would you get in an automobile if 55% of every auto crash were for reasons no one could ever figure out?" That's exactly the math on these battery failures. 55%, they don't know what the heck happened. Shoehorning them into a neighborhood is not fair. This project's been under review for years. It's consistently faced substantial opposition. And despite numerous opportunities to adapt their proposal, the applicant still refuses to address in full multiple legitimate questions. The applicant seems to be relying on persistence, returning repeatedly in the hope of finding a board willing to approve what amounts to as an industrial operation in the heart of a residential neighborhood. And it's an ironic application because for years, these solar developers have said, "Well, we're going to go to the state, we're going to get a new siting law, we're going to show who's boss here, and the local communities will have no say." Well, guess what? Two weeks ago, the governor in this new bill said, "Local communities jurisdiction matters, as does cumulative impacts." And as, as was just said, we have already in Wareham paid our fair share. We respectfully ask that you reject this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other speakers tonight? Nancy, are you coming forward? Do we need a break? Julie? One moment, Nancy. Did she leave? Can we take a five-minute break until Ms. Moran can return?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The planning board is back in session at 9:46.
Good evening, my name is Nancy McHale. Some new information-
Can you spell?
McHale, M-C-H-A-L-E.
And your address, please?
87 Ferring Hill Road.
Thank you.
And yes, I'm one of those abutters that lives on the east side that's going to be affected by whatever happens downstream or upstream. Anyway, one of the new things that Mr. Shanahan presented was, or talked about, was the Conservation Commission's approval, impending approval for the DEP. And I just wondered if through you, if Mr. Flaherty had anything new to offer on that or insight?
Everything that Mr. Shanahan presented to you this evening is accurate. They do have a superseding order from Mass DEP. They appealed our denial under the local bylaw. Representing council from them and town council have met numerous times now. The Conservation Commission voted to allow Chair Slavin to act on their behalf in determining how to move forward through that appeal. After a presentation that was given to us by the applicant's council, we came to terms with them and have filed judgment, action for judgment. So they will likely have a local order of conditions within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, which we would look for before we end this session.
Correct.
Thank you.
So the question then becomes, because this is a new application, I don't understand the logic for not needing a new order of conditions or at least a new review of the Conservation Commission, who also has new members on that board? And Mr. Flaherty is now the new, actually, I believe he's no longer the conservation agent, he's the land use planner, and that Christine and I, I'm sorry, I've forgotten her last name, is the conservation agent. So that there are new players in the Conservation Commission arena and it seems dubious that they're not allowed to take a whack at this plan as well.
I understand your question, but if there's a settlement and there's an order of conditions, that's, that's what we'll go with. That's all we-
Right, but that is an order of conditions about an old plan. It's not about submission.
Okay, so that's a different question. So what we can determine, and I think it's reasonable, is that the order of conditions that they're issuing is on the same plan set that we're reviewing.
Is that indeed the case?
Well, we can determine that, we should. That's a reasonable ask.
That, that is a huge ask. Please, yes.
Okay.
And that they have had a chance to review that? Make sure that that, and that they have had a chance to review that.
That's their process. As long as they, I believe, as long as they've reviewed the plan we reviewed and they issue an order of conditions, that's all we require.
Okay, but there's no determination that this current Conservation Commission Board has reviewed those?
That the Conservation Board is an entity that survives membership. It's not membership-specific, just like this board is a planning board, I think. But I understand your request. We'll investigate.
Town Council. Okay, I mean, it just seems to defy logic, which I understand the law doesn't necessarily always abide that way, or, thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. My, I submitted a letter so you have those, my belief that the, not everything was done in order to mitigate the damage, the impending damage that I see coming from this solar farm. There are many ways to look at solar panels, but they are not permeable. They, water does not pass through them, it runs off of them, just like any other roof structure. There are different ways to do the stormwater calculations, and even the DEP, who doesn't particularly address solar farms, say that citing them in the farms, clear-cutting hills requires special attention to that. That's all outlined in my letter and notice. There are studies out of the University of Pennsylvania that talks about placing the panels further apart perhaps would help, that actually putting gravel at the drip lines on all of them might help. But there's all different ways to slice this, and no one can agree on exactly what the best way is. So now you've got a major slope being clear-cut. Yes, they've tried to take some water from the west side and schluff it over to the east side, which is where the wetlands are anyway. It just doesn't make any sense to me how their stormwater calculations, lest you, are going to protect the safety of those of us downhill from it. I just don't understand. I would ask that those stormwater calculations be reconsidered or that this project be denied outright. The other thing is, is that on their plans, I noticed again that, oh, we have sightlines to the residences. We don't have sightlines and distances to the conservation land, to the back lot of, on the north, the very north side. There's not a house on that little triangle. There could be at some point in time. There's not right now. There's no house on the back lots of Ms. Hayes's property. There could be at some point in time. However, there's no distance to those. There's no sound barriers on those east and north sides, those northeast sides. People have talked about the wells, the septics, all of that. The water is a huge concern. Contamination of the water is major. We have well waters. Right now, we don't have any PFAS in them. You know, it's good, safe, potable water. I'd like to keep it that way selfishly. But I also think that there is a huge cumulative effect in this country, in this town, that we have more than our fair share. And the fact that it is an economic justice community, an environmental justice community, is important. The list of abutters is not the same for the first project and this project. People have left the community, many of them for health reasons, I've heard anecdotally, but it's their concern. And the people who've moved in, you heard from one tonight, who's extremely concerned about it. And again, you know, we're all trying to peddle this in the right direction. But I would ask you to read my submission and take a look at it and make your best, best judgment on how this goes. But personally, I would love you to deny it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? We're getting close to, we have four minutes, so I'd like to not hear any more testimony unless someone's not seeing anyone online. John?
No one is there.
Okay, so Mr. Shanahan, if you would come back. We need to talk about continuing.
I respectfully ask that you continue it not to your next meeting, to your meeting after that because of the number of subjects that have come up that I think you deserving the material in advance of a meeting. So I don't have a problem if you want to push it back until.
That would be in January, Jane, do you have your?
I mean, I'm happy to go back in two weeks.
Are we not meeting here?
If you think it'll be productive.
We are not meeting the 24th.
23rd.
23rd, no, we are not meeting.
Okay, all right, so January 13th.
January 13th.
Sounds good to me.
Can you just send a letter to the planning office and?
I shall.
So this is hereby continued to January 13th. Josh is gone. Kenny, you're still on?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, we're not meeting the 23rd, right?
No, you're not.
I didn't think so. Okay, we're going to continue to the 13th then.
That's correct.
All right.
2025.
2025, not 1961.
Have a good Thanksgiving all.
Thank you.
You as well.
All right, a couple of more items on the agenda. Ken, Josh said the only pending application is still Water Whiz, which we scheduled for the 27th. Is that correct?
The 27th of what?
I can't hear you. Can you be quiet? We still have a meeting going on. Please, please.
The 27th of which month?
January 27th for Water Whiz.
Yeah, but I think at first we'll have to get a letter of denial from the Building Commissioner on it, and in that, it appears that there may be a need to go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, then we won't hear it. But right now, the last meeting, we thought we were going to hear them. So you'll let us know.
That's right.
Sam, any report on the 53G accounts? Okay, so we'll defer that. Rules and regs?
Working on incorporating the decommissioning, sorry, working on the final step, which is incorporating the decommissioning, but otherwise they're ready to go.
Okay.
That's the final version.
Mike, you're up.
Grenades over the fence.
Huh?
Throwing grenades over the fence.
You want to move to close?
You have to take a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 9:59. We beat the 10 o'clock.